Good morning, everybody. We'll call the meeting to order now. If I could have you all join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, individual and liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so this morning we are down to Commissioners. Wooster and Bachelly are absent today. So, next on the list will be if there are any agenda changes.
There are none, just to note, in case anyone's aware, but Items E2 through 5 have all been continued to the June 8th meeting. So if you're here for either, any of those items, those will be continued to June 8th.
Thank you. Okay, so we'll go to public comment now for anybody that would like to speak for any items that are not on the agenda. Good morning, Bill.
Good morning to the Commission. My name is Bill McManus. I'm the Chairman of the Ban Commercial Cultivation Committee. Just wanted to give you an update that has already been presented to the Board of Supervisors regarding the draft ban ordinance that is moving forward, which will come to the Planning Commission sometime in the future. It's a rapidly changing scenario with all of this. When the ordinance was first released, we went through it and found some items that we thought were particularly disturbing, one of which was the omission of dispensaries from the draft ordinance. So we have taken the time to put together a booklet for you, which kind of puts our thoughts together on our opinion of how that should be happen, or how that should happen. Additionally, right after the ban ordinance was released, the EIR, the draft EIR, was released, which has its own flavor and recommendations. And then at the same time, we received notice that there was going to be a new set of regulations issued by the Bureau of Marijuana Control for the State of California to control all marijuana activities. And this is the process of trying to combine and regulate MRSA AB 266 and Prop 64, both of which are almost identical type or laws, but they need to be implemented. As far as a legislative agenda for the county, you only have six months until the end of the year. That's when 266 and 64 take effect. Six months is not a lot of time to kick a can down the road for something that you want to fix before these things are implemented. In our booklet, we have a copy of Chapter 4 of the new regulations from the state, which pertain to dispensaries, and we find those particularly disturbing. And you might want to take a look at how much activity is going to be expanded at the expense of cities and counties who don't ban. So we invite you to take a look at the booklet. It'll be coming before you again. We hope that you'll consider the ban, including the dispensaries. And at the last minute, at the board meeting, the Board of Supervisors did take a poll among themselves, and as I heard it, they were in, three of them were in agreement that the ban on dispensaries should be considered along with the draft ordinance to ban all commercial cultivation, as we contend that dispensaries are commercial cultivators. So if there's any questions, I'd be glad to answer them later. I want to get around, I haven't met the new Commissioners. Only Lisa did I know. Kelly's not here, so thank you for stepping up and being a Commissioner. And hopefully everything will go smoothly, and I will be back to see you. And I did have a copy, I think I gave to Mr. Maurer, that would count as a submission of public comment to be in the record. If you need another one for the Planning Commission, let me know, and I've got extra copies with me. Would like it included as part of the body of comments for when this comes up before the Planning Commission.
Okay. Did you leave one for Commissioner Wooster and Commissioner Bachelly?
I asked about it, but it's going to languish around until the next meeting. So, and I had given one to County Council at the special meeting of the board. We could go Friday. And if anyone needs a copy, and there's no sense trying to copy it, I've got extras.
I would leave two with Annette, that she can send to those two Commissioners, just so they have a copy.
Okay. Does the Commission need one, like in a file, or the one I gave you suffice?
The one that I, that you gave me is sufficient.
It's good, good for both places.
Yes.
The Board of Supervisors and the Planning Commission.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment for items not on the agenda? Okay, seeing none. We will move to our consent agenda and approval of the minutes for April 27, 2017. Do any of the Commissioners have comments on the minutes?
Yes, I do. Let's see, on Item 3, the extension of time for the stoppings, they, they didn't request a 12-month extension. I'm suggesting that we should say the applicants are requesting approval of an extension for an unspecified time on approved tentative parcel.
Staff had recommended 12 months. We extended it to 24.
Yeah. Here it says the applicants are requesting approval. They, during the meeting, suggested three years.
Okay.
Other than that, just on Items 4 and 5 and 6, since Kelly isn't here, I'm...
Oh, you're going to do our corrections?
I'm the owner of the apostrophe.
Okay. Great, thank you.
Appeal of Planning Directors denial. The directors should have R apostrophe S on those. That's it.
Okay. Commissioner Sisk, do you have anything to changes?
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Okay, can I get a motion to accept the minutes as amended?
Motion.
I'll second it.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 3-0. Next item on the agenda is going to be the public hearing for the West Point General Dollar Store 2016-002. And Gina, you're going to do our presentation on that?
I am.
Thank you.
Gina, I'm sorry, before you start, I should mention that before I became a Planning Commissioner, I had a short discussion with Holly Mines and a few other people who I believe were West Point residents, and the subject of the Dollar General proposal was discussed. And I just make this statement as full disclosure.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Okay, so what we have before us today is a tentative parcel map for the purpose of developing a Dollar General store in West Point. The project description includes a tentative parcel map to divide a 4.42 acre parcel into two parcels, one of which will be 1.33 acres and the other one 3.09 acres in size. The purpose of the land division as stated before is for the construction of a Dollar General store, and that's proposed to be placed on the smaller parcel, Proposed Parcel 1, of 1.33 acres. In addition to the tentative map for the purpose of building the store, they've also requested a road modification to reduce the road standard for improvements of the, of the road that they're going to take access from. This is a copy of the tentative parcel map. You should have all gotten a large, except for, except for Lisa, whose map never showed up in the mail, but you did go ahead and didn't have any issues with the computer version of it.
Correct.
So as stated before, this is a copy of the tentative map as proposed. You can see that the smaller parcel, Proposed Parcel 1, is, is directly adjacent to State Highway 26 and is proposed to take access via that road easement that you'll see kind of between Proposed Parcel 1 and the adjacent parcel owned by Maynard Management. Here's an overview of the location of the subject parcel. It's currently addressed at 430 Main Street in West Point. However, we'll discuss this a little bit further. The access is proposed to be taken directly off of the road easement that will access Highway 26. Aerial photo of the subject property, you'll notice that it's been graded where the tree line is. That is the, that particular, guess I should probably learn to use the laser, huh? This little tree line in here, there's a topography, significant topography issue down in this particular area. The property owner lives in, at this parcel here. They've actually kind of contemplated the possibility of maybe doing a lotline adjustment in the future. That's not really part of this project, but they have expressed the, the constraints with that parcel because of the topography and the vegetation and whatnot. There was a determination that it was, the terrain is prohibiting an actual access onto Main Street, even though that's where it's currently addressed. So that's why we have a revised map, which we'll go into in the next slide. So under general plan and zoning, currently, the, the current general plan designates this property as the West Point Community Center. Lands in the community center, according to the general plan, are set aside for intensive land uses generated by single, or I should say multifamily residential, commercial, and even light industrial uses. The zoning of the parcel is currently C2, which is general commercial, which is our more intense commercial zoning parcels. In the C2 zone, new parcels to be created can be a minimum of 7,000 square feet when the parcels are provided with district's water and sewage disposal for which this parcel is. CCWD currently provides or will provide service for both water and sewer to the parcel. So the 7,000 square foot minimum parcel size is, is, the parcel map is consistent with that. It's actually exceeding that density allowance, so we're fine. Under the zoning of C2, the proposed Dollar General store is an actual permitted use and not a discretionary, doesn't require discretionary action through a use permit, so it is permitted. As I kind of touched on briefly, through the, through the original, we've actually got two revisions to the application. The original map actually took access off of, Proposed Parcel 2 was supposed to be taking access off of Main Street. And Proposed Parcel 1 and Maynard Management were going to take access off of the, the current, current road easement, utility easement, and constructed road that is adjacent between the two parcels. Public Works came back with some road requirements that were a lot less than, than, than the template L. But upon further evaluation of the project, the project applicant and the landowner revised the application to, in, to allow for Proposed Parcel 1 and 2 to take access at the same location off of the proposed driveway easement, which would then access 26, and no longer off of Main Street. So as a result of that change, or that modified tentative map now providing access for three parcels rather than two, Public Works actually had to review that at a different standard, and they now impose a commercial road template L, which includes two 12-foot travel lanes, a nine-foot parking lane, seven and a half foot sidewalks, all in a 60-foot right-of-way. Well, that just wasn't, the, the project applicant just wasn't able to provide that sort of a right-of-way and still accommodate the parking lot and the landscaping in addition to the building that they needed to construct there. So they requested a road modification. This is just a copy of the Public Works' template. Oh, it's supposed to say L. Their modification now includes two 12-foot travel lanes for ingress and egress. They're proposing a separate sidewalk with a path from the road right-of-way to the front door of the proposed Dollar General in Proposed Parcel 1. One of the requirements through the road ordinance and modification request is that an engineer actually certifies that traffic safety will not be compromised, for which they have done. The Public Works Department has reviewed the modification and concurs with the findings that traffic safety will not be compromised, and they recommend approval of the modification.
Excuse me.
Yes.
On that particular subject, did that engineer then consider the size of the delivery trucks that would be making deliveries to the, to the store, and whether it would have room to get, stay in its lane when it's turning off of Highway 26 into this smaller roadway?
Perhaps, maybe we can get Public Works to weigh in on that. That's a, that's a title 12 thing, so I basically take their recommendation. But we, Robert Pakenger is here, and he's prepared to answer any questions we have. Did you want to do that now, or did you want to move forward?
No, we can do it.
Okay. We'll get him to come up after the presentation then. Under CEQA, we did, we did do a focused initial study. We addressed cultural resources and traffic and transportation. We circulated the initial study for a 30-day comment period. CEQA allows us to address project-specific significant effects for which we did. Being that the parcel is in a high archaeological sensitivity area, we required a cultural resource assessment in addition to potential impacts to State Highway 26. Caltrans actually required a traffic study. So given that, the archaeological-cultural resource assessment did identify one, one, one resource which happened to be a ditch, a water ditch that was, that was developed back in the mining era, and it was obviously used to transport water from one location to another. The special study indicated the location of that, which basically did not impact any of the development, but in addition, it was not found to be a significant resource, and there was no protection that was required of that anyway. But it is identified, and the, the report has done its, its, its responsibility of actually identifying the resource, and so that's now part of the, the permanent record. Traffic impact analysis was requested by Caltrans as a result of the revised tentative map, and that was to address potential impacts on State Highway 26, for which the traffic study concluded that the, the impacts associated with the project were less than significant, which didn't warrant any improvement out on the highway. Caltrans has reviewed the, the initial study, as well as the traffic analysis, and concurs with the findings in the report. During the process, we've had lots of, of public concerns. As you see in your packet, that probably consumed half of the paper that you received, was several concerns from the public, none of which actually were directly related to the parcel map itself or the creation of another parcel. They were all directly related to how is this going to look, and how is it going to impact our community?
But that is a question before us today, isn't it?
Excuse me?
As, under CEQA, we are to look at what this action could lead to down the line, and here it's clear it's going to lead down the line to the development of a Dollar General store. And under CEQA, we have to look at the design and, and the operation, the environmental impacts from the construction, operation of that store. I understood that this, that the Planning Department agrees with this, that we, that this is part of our consideration, that aesthetics and such now is a part of this.
Well, yes and no. Yes, under CEQA, we need to look at the whole of the project, and it's clear that the, the parcel map is leading to a proposed Dollar General store. We have permit application submitted with the Building Department to construct that. The difficulty we're having is the discretionary permit that's before the Commission is a parcel map. And the parcel map conditions apply to the recording of the map. We really don't have any ability to impose conditions or standards on a future building permit with a parcel map.
Well, I'm not talking about standards on the building permit. I'm talking about CEQA.
I understand, and this is where, where it's a little difficult for us to apply CEQA in this project, other than almost voluntary changes to the building permit application by the applicant.
I think it'd be two different things, though. I mean, that, that, the state law, that CEQA.
We have to look at the potential impacts of the project, which includes the Dollar General store.
And, and as, as part of that, one of the things we can require is a mitigated negative declaration.
Right.
Whether that's...
If we find that the project has significant impacts that need to be mitigated...
Yes.
Then, yes, we can impose mitigation measures. And I'm sure we'll have further discussion on that as we go through this hearing today.
And those are not necessarily voluntary. They are, they can be imposed by the Planning Commission or the Planning Department or county anyhow, under CEQA.
The, the difficulty that we have is how we would apply mitigation measures on something that is actually not really before the Commission, the building permit application.
Well...
We, we have to consider that this is the likely result of approval of this map, that a building permit for this store. We also have to consider that there is another two acres of land available for future development, that we have no idea what might be built on that. The parcel map itself is simply the division of the land, but it's true that CEQA says that we are supposed to consider the whole of the project. The, and I'm just saying, we have struggled with, if the Commission finds that additional mitigation is necessary, I'm not sure how we're going to impose such measures on the parcel map.
Well, it would be a matter of public record that these mitigation measures are required, and that would be an application of state law, which I should think would preempt the county law if, if there's, if there's a county provision that says, oh, building permits can't have conditions placed on them from the parcel map process, why we have to go back to the state law? The state laws, I understand, is that a project is not exempt from CEQA if it can be fairly argued that significant adverse environmental impacts may occur in the reasonably foreseeable chain of events, beginning with a proposed action. Proposed action being the parcel map. And it, as you indicate, it's clear that the Dollar General store is what's in the future.
Right.
As part of this process.
I'm in a...
But maybe we could, let's, let's finish Gina's presentation and get into the public hearing component, and then we'll maybe get to the point of discussion of whether or not the impacts are significant and need to be mitigated.
Fine. I will, I will have further questions for Gina before we get to public.
So, getting back to my presentation. Some of their concerns were regarding the design features of the proposed store. There was an overwhelming concern of maintaining a historic character in their community. Obviously, a, a standard Dollar General store may not fit that kind of historic community feel, if you will. One of the, one of the requests in, and keep in mind, we had several letters, some of which were very short, others were very extensive, continuing comments over and over. Others focused on how are we going to, in their minds, improve the project. Others were just flat out in objection to the store, period. So, you know, I'm just trying to kind of frame all these in, in, under one category without causing anyone any, any kind of concern or placing them, you know, in, in a, in a particular category, but I, I can't really address them individually, so I'm just going to kind of lump them all together. One of the requests was for reduced parking. As we know, the code is very specific with parking. Each zone district calls out for specific parking, and that's generally upon the square footage of the building. In addition to specific uses, actually call out even more strict parking requirements. So reduced parking is one thing that was asked for. In order to reduce parking, one has to apply for a variance, and in order to apply, to make findings for a variance, there has to be a need for the reduction of. And in this particular case, there is no, there are no findings to approve a, a variance, so to speak, to a parking standard, because they've already met the standard. In addition, there was a great concern over lighting. As we, if you dug into county code, you'll know that our lighting performance standard regulations are pretty, pretty on the light side. Not much involved there, other than directing and shielding some lighting so that it doesn't, you know, shine into some neighbor's residential, you know, bedroom window. But we have taken into consideration all of the comments, you know, that we've taken in, and Peter and I will go through and, and do the best job that we can to, to not only reduce the lighting, but we can't sacrifice safety either. But we want to ensure that there is no issue with lighting in that respect, but, but we have not reviewed the actual lighting plan yet. That's part of the building permit process. In addition, there's been a push for reduced signage. Again, signage in the, signage is regulated through the zoning code, and it requires a specific amount of signage. You're allowed one square foot of signage for every linear foot of storefrontage. So we have yet to review and signage plan, but we will go ahead and do that during the building permit process in accordance to code.
Now, that would be, of course, after we're done with this. So we would have to determine whether there is a significant environmental impact, and if so...
And again, I don't know, we, we'll have a further discussion. I don't know how you're going to impose something specific on this project that you're not going to apply to every other commercial project in this county. We have to remember that there's a lack of policy, there's no ordinances, and there are specifically no design guidelines for any other community in Calversa County, with the exception of McCollum Hill. Kind of ties our hands, but we'll discuss that a little bit further.
Again, we're dealing with state law.
In addition, there's a request for increased landscaping. Again, there's a 5% landscaping requirement for projects in the C2 zone, and beyond that, I don't know what else we can require. We do have the ability, because there's, there's not a whole lot, again, in our, in our landscape section of the code. We do have the ability to work with the, the applicants in proposing some, you know, a good landscape plan, something that's going to fit the area, something that may need. We may find that we need additional screening of, of something, say perhaps maybe your trash containers. We have the ability to review that and require that kind of thing. So we'll go ahead and see where today's hearing leads us. These are the elevations that I actually found in the building permit. So the applicant was very kind to send me a PDF so I could include it in your packet. I apologize, it's a little small. This is the best I could do. But they have imposed some features into their project that staff feels that are appropriate for the area, maintaining more of a historic appearance rather than the standard Dollar General store. Some of the features that they've included are parapets, lap siding, and concrete masonry facade, metal panel canopies, as well as decorative shutters on the side of the building. Again, you don't see that in a standard Dollar General store, so they are, you know, they have heard some of the desires and the, and the concerns from the public, and they've imposed some of these features into their project. Again, touching on those performance standards, parking requirement in the C2 zone is one parking space for every 200 square feet of gross floor area. 5% of new landscaping is required for all structures, area devoted to structures and, and parking. Another performance standard is to shield and direct exterior lighting so that it does not shine into adjoining residences. And we have to designate solid waste and storage areas and recycling access areas as well. Here's a copy of the site plan. You'll see the, the proposed driveway or now road coming directly off of 26. The building kind of sits off to the, to the right of the, of the map here. We've got parking out in the front, parking along the side. This is a cul-de-sac to provide access to Proposed Parcel 2, as well as access to Maynard Management.
While we're on that, Gina, could you explain the, the sidewalk? You mentioned that there's a sidewalk from the right-of-way to the front door of the store. store, and that Public Works is requiring that it be ADA.
I believe that's what this is right here.
But that looks like a crosswalk across the parking lot. Is that what you're calling the sidewalk?
Well, they're calling the sidewalk here, and then this is a pathway through the parking lot to the store.
And that would be, that would be ADA compliant the way Public Works. And is there a, is there a sidewalk along Highway 20? I can't, I can't tell what the white area is.
Along, along Highway 26?
Yeah.
You mean, are they, are they proposed, proposing a sidewalk?
Yeah.
No, so the sidewalk actually starts here.
Starts there at the roadway.
Right.
And then, then what is the, what is the white area around the blob there that's between the highway and the?
This landscaping?
Right.
Looks like bare ground. Oh, detention basin.
And is the landscaping the kind of crosshatch thing?
Yes.
And is that also landscaping there in the back?
Landscaping is here, here, and I believe there's landscaping here, although it's not illustrated on this map. I've seen another map that actually illustrates some more additional landscaping here. That is, landscaping strip is required adjacent to parking lots and roadways, so. Moving on.
So, yeah, I guess then, so somebody could be dropped off at the entrance to the driveway, and they could walk about 25 feet on sidewalk, and then get wheeled or walk across the parking lot.
I suppose that they wanted to do that, yes.
Okay.
Personally, I'd rather park in the parking lot.
Might drive around to the front door and get out there, yes.
They got plenty of parking. Okay, tried to include some photos. Sometimes it's a little difficult just to kind of visualize what things look like by looking at a drawn map. This is a photo of the, I'm standing on the interior of the parcel, looking outwards Highway 26. This happens to be the Caltrans Maintenance Yard. So, the Dollar General, if I am correct, should be located somewhere approximately in here on the other side of that vegetation area. Talking about the community and kind of surrounding neighborhood, we got some pictures of the surrounding neighborhood. This happens to be on the adjacent lot just next to the Dollar General. This is the Ace Hardware Store. Directly across Highway 26, you'll find the Caltrans Maintenance Yard. Directly adjacent on the other side of the proposed project is Maynard Management. This little thing right here is, my understanding, is a telephone, kind of little telephone building of some sort, and a little tower, microwave tower or something that goes along with the telephone company.
And the road we're seeing here on the bright hand side of that picture is basically.
This is the road that currently exists. This is what's going to have to be improved to provide access to both proposed parcel one and proposed parcel two, as well as serving Maynard Management as it currently does. This is the only residential development I could find on the street, which was just down the road. This happens to be the Caltrans Maintenance Yard, so this is just directly down the street.
Well, just on the other side of the Caltrans, there's another residence.
I didn't happen to notice. There's commercial, vacant commercial property, just, just on the other side of Caltrans. There's a lot of vacant property.
If you go to, I think you had an aerial photograph that showed the area, that one would show the residence that's directly across the street from this side.
Okay, so more residential. So, this is that residence we just looked at. Again, this is the Caltrans Maintenance Yard. This is the little telephone company building, and this would be the current driveway access to the, to the parcel in Maynard Management. This is actually a view from the, from the backside of the project, Main Street, on, looking from Main Street onto the parcel. This is the area that will not be developed, that will more than likely be consumed into the adjacent lot at some time in the future, just because of the topography issues that we have. But if you'll notice, it really can't see through all the vegetation and the difference in the, in the topography, you can't see the backside of that lot that's going to be developed. There's another picture. I do believe that that happens to be the, I think that's the home of the, of the landowner, again off of Main Street. So, in conclusion, staff finds that the tentative map is consistent with the general plan and the zoning. The road modification was identified as not compromising traffic safety, has been recommended for approval. In addition, staff feels that the added design features of the Dollar General actually conform to the historic character of the community and the surrounding buildings, and we are satisfied that it improves the visual quality of the development proposed. Performance standards of the base zone shall be applied to projects allowing, allowing the county to further regulate parking, landscaping, lighting, and signage. Again, that's in accordance to code. All of that will be part of the, performance standards will be part of the building permit review process. And that concludes my presentation, and.
I do have some questions.
I'm certain you have more questions.
I think there's a statement on page 12 of the staff report that says, "Conditions cannot be imposed as part of the tentative parcel map approval because the design of the subsequent development is unrelated to the recording of the parcel map." Now, that may be true under county law, but what we're considering today, amongst other things, is this weather, and an environmental impact report should be applied under state law. And we, if we find that there are significant environmental impacts, adverse environmental impacts that could result from the development of this property the way it's planned, we could require a, an environmental impact report. Is that, do you agree with that?
Yes, I think taking the step to go to an EIR, maybe a little jump beyond, but we could impose mitigation if we felt that there was a significant impact. And if, then if we could not find that there were mitigation measures that would reduce it to less than significant, then an EIR would be required.
I understand, and that, that's, that's what I'm saying, is that that's the question before us. And if, if a mitigated negative declaration is appropriate, we could decide that.
Yes.
And at that point, then it is, in a sense, voluntary on the part of the applicant that they would agree to these mitigation. Because if they don't agree, and there are significant adverse effects, why then we would have to require an EIR.
Right.
And so, anything that they would agree to would be a binding agreement going down the line as far as if it was more stringent than what, say, the county's lighting requirements are. But they would still be bound to those agreements to mitigate the environment effect, correct?
Yes, that's correct. I'm not sure that, I'm not sure what mechanism we would use to create a binding agreement. I'm just sort of thinking out loud here. And this has been the challenge we've had with this project, is that, you know, we, it's not a planned development, we don't have design review, and so if we wanted, under normal circumstances, to address design criteria, those would be the tools that we would use. If they had come in for a building permit only, and they did not need to subdivide the land to accommodate their project, we would have no discretion whatsoever to look at this. The fact that they have proposed, they wanted to subdivide the land to only acquire a portion of the property is what has created the discretion to the county. And so, I'm sure there is some mechanism that we could use to agree to mitigation measures. Just not exactly sure what that is at this point.
And just as a reminder, that presupposes a finding of significant environmental impact, which is not the case at the moment.
We haven't, we haven't found that yet, no. I just want to, but, so that statement on page 12 of the staff report is really referring to, under county law, there's, conditions cannot be imposed, but under the EIR process, why the mitigation can be agreed to by the developer, and at that point, the developer can be bound to those mitigation agreements.
Yeah, I think that's a correct statement.
And I understand also that the consistency of a project with the general plan and the zoning does not guarantee that there's no significant impact under Secqua, correct?
That's correct.
It is just mandatory binding that we have to make.
Yeah. So, by the way, the site plan that you showed and the site plan you have attached to the proposed resolution, for some reason, the one on the resolution is elongated, it's distorted.
I'm sorry, I tried to stretch it out and fill in the space.
Oh. It made parking space, and suddenly it's very strange. Okay. On the exterior elevation plans that you set forth on page eight and that you've shown us here today, were those part of the initial study that was made available to the public?
No.
And do you know if the applicants discussed these plans with members of the public?
I don't know, they, prior to submitting an application, I believe at some point they had a meeting with the general public. What happened at the meeting, what was discussed, what was shown, I have no idea. The county was not involved in that.
We can ask. And.
These are the plans that they've submitted to the building department for their permit for construction.
Okay. And has the planning department had any community input that agrees with the planning department's conclusion that the applicant's design features are compatible with the character of West Point?
No, most people, there's, there's several references in the letters that were received that implied that there were somewhere in the neighborhood of 70 to 75 people at this public meeting that they had with the Dollar General folks in West Point, and that the majority of them were in favor of and didn't apparently have any real issues. But, you know, there was a handful of letters that we've received, and some of the individuals submitted multiple letters with the same concerns. So, it seems to be a handful of individuals that, you know, are pursuing design, certain design features. But no, we have not received any letters specifically.
And some of those letters indicated that the people that were in favor of having the services of the Dollar General store there.
We weren't there, so I don't know.
So, you haven't seen any plans for signs other than the sign that's on the building?
No, no proposed signage yet.
And in the initial study checklist, it's not clear to me why the planning department did not include the mandatory findings of significance that constitute Roman numeral 18 and Appendix G of the Secqua guidelines at the end of those guidelines. The generalized.
Oh, it's very.
Statements of environmental impact that, since they're called mandatory, it seemed to me that they probably ought to be in there. Okay, I won't go too on slide further, but you don't know why that wasn't in there?
We felt that the two issues of significance at the time that we first developed the initial study were cultural resources and.
Traffic.
Traffic, thank you. The conclusion that we reached on the rest of it, which we discussed sort of generally, was that all the other issues, you know, were not significant. We addressed them sort of in a general context, and that included those mandatory findings.
Mandatory findings, but aren't they mandatory?
And, but I guess maybe with 2020 hindsight, that probably is a good thing to include specific findings regarding those. But we felt it was sufficiently addressed in the overall context of the discussion.
And why did you not include the aesthetics question?
At the time, we didn't think that it was a significant issue. When it was raised by the public, then we did address it in our, our report to you. After our analysis, you know, based on the issues raised, we reached the same conclusion that it was not a significant impact.
Well, one, if you had had those questions in there, the first one asks if the project would have a substantial adverse effect on a scenic vista. And page 11 of the staff report states that the store site itself is not a scenic vista, and I, I don't think that really answers the question. I mean, if, if you go back to the aerial view that you have in the, in the staff report, you'll see there is a residence that's directly across the street from the house.
From the scenic.
Excuse me?
How does that make it scenic?
Oh, get to that.
Okay.
Currently, a person at that structure or on Highway 26, looking through the site of the Dollar General in the evening, would see the sun setting into a substantial tree line, the trees that you were showing us between Main Street and the site. After the construction anticipated store, that same person would see the sun setting into what, if I figure out from, from the plans, it'd be a 24-foot tall wall with Dollar General emblazoned on it, surrounded by a parking lot with light standards, and possibly major signs out by the street, which we don't even know about. And to me, I would think that that would be a significant effect on a scenic vista. It'd be like if you were, if you had a house that was across a highway from, say, the Grand Canyon, but between the road, on the other side of the road and the Grand Canyon, there's a blank piece of property filled with litter unsightly itself, but with the Grand Canyon behind it. And somebody built a billboard on that blank piece of property, blocked your view of the Grand Canyon, that would be, that would have a significant adverse effect on a scenic vista, even though that property itself was not inherently scenic.
Are you saying there's people standing out in the middle of Highway 26 looking at the sunset?
I'm saying there is a scenic vista involved here, and there are people who live across the road, directly across the road from the Dollar General, looking due west.
Which I did not get any comments.
There is not a standard, there's not an adopted definition or standard for scenic vista. And I, when we look at the context of Secqua and scenic vista, we're looking typically beyond an individual, you know, view. I believe I was scenic vista off my porch, but that's not something that is normally considered a scenic vista. If you're talking about the edge of the Grand Canyon, yes, that's a scenic vista. So, somewhere there is a judgment call of what is a scenic vista for the general public, as opposed to an individual's view of the.
Well, the question.
Commissioner Ladders, can I interrupt you for one second? I'd like you to, like, run down your notes, but then we also have a hearing going on, and we are supposed to hear from Gina, and then I'm supposed to process it to the applicant here.
I understand, but we have, we have here a rural, tiny.
I understand, but the time for us to do all this discussion is after we have heard from the applicant, so that we can keep processing this hearing and hear from the public. And then we get to go through all of your notes and finalize our decisions. It's like we've missed several steps here that I want to get to. Because maybe after we hear from the applicant and the public, it's going to answer a lot of questions on your sheet there.
That's fine.
Okay. Do you want to run through more? Because I know you have a lot of notes there that you might want to just hit on, and that way the applicant can. you might want to just hit on and that way the applicant can answer some of your questions, but I don't want to make it a big discussion.
I'll have questions for the applicant.
Perfect. Okay. Would you like to come up and do your presentation, please?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Derek Wilson with Rubicon Design Group. I always prepare a bunch of notes for these presentations and then I throw them away and come to the podium and talk about whatever just went on. So we, obviously, SEQA is going to be a component of this. We have a SEQA expert here, so I think rather than have me discuss legal issues, I'll, I'll hand off in a minute or two to the other team member. And I'd like to start by saying that we have absolutely no problem agreeing to the minimum site lighting that, that the county can agree to. We, we have to design to, to the code that's in place. So that showed up with parking. We'd be happy with less parking. We would not be happy trying to get a variance. So we have to design to that standard. Lighting, I'm happy to, to go with whatever the minimum is. And in fact, the developer and the public are on the same page in this one. We, why would we want excess lighting? We would just pay for something we don't need. So whatever the minimum that police and county restrictions will allow, we can agree to. And in fact, most light fixtures these days are, are shielded fixtures. So getting back to the, to the overall issue, the request is only for a parcel split. The site is zoned commercial. It's allowed by right. So in that regard, it's a fairly simple request. The revising of the road width, the, the travel areas are, are standard areas. All we're doing is relocating the parking that would normally go with that road section onto our site. So in effect, we're avoiding unnecessary parking.
On that question, the, what I was raising earlier, I'm concerned, I'm, I'm assuming that you're going to have large delivery trucks delivering the goods to the store.
Sure, sure. And they have to get there safely.
And, yeah, and I'm, I'm concerned too, if, when they're turning off of Highway 26 onto your roadway and assuming there's somebody else that's coming out of that roadway, is there going to be room for that truck to make that turn without going into the opposing traffic lanes on Highway 26 to make that, that turn?
Yes. We're, we're not varying the road, the travel lane widths. We're only varying the parking that would normally accompany that travel lane.
But something, these, these large trucks need more than 12 feet.
Every, every Dollar General site on earth has to get trucks on and off the site. So that's a routine design requirement. So, so sure, our engineer planned for that. The, the project was reviewed by Caltrans through the, as part of the SEQA process. It meets all their requirements. We are, we're, we're next to the lumberyard, the hardware store and a Caltrans equipment yard. So I would argue that, that those are, are commercial and industrial uses that we can easily match or exceed the visual standards that apply to those sites.
Now, the Ace Hardware Store, I don't think has any lit signs. They have a light on their sign. What are, what are your plans as far as the lighting after your hours of operation?
To, to answer your last question first, or your middle question, I guess, people actually have mixed feelings about internally lit and externally lit signs. My feeling is we should do whatever the community wants or what, what the, what county code requires. I personally don't have a preference.
You'd be happy to have the type of signs that Dollar Generals use, say, in winters, California and such, where it's only the letters of Dollar General that are illuminated?
Yes.
Not the background?
Sure.
I'm sorry for interrupting. Commissioner Lattish, I just, I want to make sure that we stay on task with, this is the lot split right now, because you're designing the store and I want to go back to the lot split at this point. I understand where your concerns are, but I feel like we're getting off track a little bit and I want to bring us back on to talking about the lot split. Then we can address the issues.
I, I was only asking questions on subjects that he had brought up. So.
And then you're right, you're, you're right. You did. And I, and so I just want to get back on the agenda. I don't want just the lot split.
But it's the lot split and.
The General Dollar is not before us today. It's the lot split for the General Dollar. But as far as the design of the store right now, that's not here yet.
Well, I, I'd like to ask County Council if she would agree that that is a question before us, the environmental effects of the design, operation of the store, whether they have, would have significant adverse environmental effects, whether that's a question before us today.
I would concur that based on our research, we have an obligation to take into account reasonably foreseeable implications of the project, which we know includes the Dollar General. It's not a secret. Planning has plans that, that have been submitted and so that is something to be taken into account.
And that would include questions of lighting and glare and.
I agree with that. I'm just saying that we're just, we're, we're, we're held up in one spot. And I know those issues are coming up and I know we're going to discuss them.
I'm just asking him questions on something, on things he brought up. I've been, and I appreciate the responses.
I personally enjoy design discussions and I'm glad you're motivated. I think the best thing is for me to hand off to our SEQA expert and we can go into that issue a little deeper.
Good morning. I'm Sabrina Teller with the law firm of Remy Moose Manley and we represent Cross Development, the applicant on this and many other stores across the state.
And the, the first question I have for you is when are you going to come out with another, next edition of your book?
We are working very hard on it. This year, I promise, end of this year is our goal or we're all just going to quit the practice of law, I think, because it's been a long slog. Thank you for reading our book. I, I understand that there have been a lot of questions about what, to what extent SEQA applies to this project. And as Planning Director Mar explained, it's a little complicated, but let me try to simplify it first with a reference to the SEQA statute, which while you are correct that SEQA applies to the whole of the project and that is the starting point for an analysis, the legislature has also stated quite clearly, and this is a provision that's been there for a long time, it's Public Resources Code, Section 21004, regarding legislative intent and the extent of public agency authority. And I'll just read it because it's brief. In mitigating or avoiding a significant effect of a project on the environment, a public agency may exercise only those express or implied powers provided by law other than this division, referring to SEQA. However, a public agency may use discretionary powers, discretionary powers provided by such other law for the purpose of mitigating or avoiding a significant effect on the environment, subject to the express or implied constraints or limitations that may be provided by the law. So what that provision is saying is that SEQA doesn't grant powers to mitigate where the agency doesn't already have that authority. And so what I think staff has been trying to explain here is that with respect to the parcel map, they are restricted to mitigating impacts that can be mitigated under the county's authority for parcel maps. And so it, to the extent that it invokes things that are governed by the non-discretionary building permit process, the project is only subject to those objective criteria that are set forth in the building permit process.
And would you say that, that what you're saying is completely consistent with the case law set forth in your book and a more recent case law?
Yes, I am, and in fact, I'm thinking very specifically of a case that I litigated in City of San Diego called the Navy Broadway Complex Coalition, which dealt with this situation where there was some subsequent review for a project that had been previously reviewed a long time before. And people wanted to kind of reopen a whole lot of design issues on the project. And the court found that the agency's discretion to analyze and therefore, and then mitigate for all of these other issues was constrained by its own authority, by virtue of the type of approval that was at hand. And so SEQA does not expand the universe to analyze and mitigate impacts for which the agency itself does not have the authority, its own authority to mitigate. So you can acknowledge that this is what the store is going to look like, but if your own authority doesn't grant you the power to change the design because of subjective preferences about the design, then SEQA doesn't give you that authority either.
But it would not limit the mitigated negative declaration if the developer, with input from the public, would agree to specific mitigations?
A developer can always agree to voluntary measures. And in fact, the developer here has tried to incorporate some of the concerns of the community in the design and reflect more of a historic, you know, Gold Rush era feel. But those are voluntary measures and they're not ones that would be required by the SEQA process here because again, of the constraints and the distinction here between the ministerial building permit process and the objective criteria that the county must apply to design concerns in that process and what you would be allowed to consider for a parcel map. So.
But the, the decision as to whether or not to grant the parcel map amendment is a discretionary decision.
Yes.
And with a discretionary decision, SEQA comes into application.
Correct.
But you're saying if, if the county doesn't have a design ordinance, we can't find that there is an environmental impact from the design. Say, say they were going to have six light, lit signs along Highway 26 and the county doesn't have, assuming that the county doesn't have anything that would prohibit that, you're saying that in our application of SEQA, we cannot find that there is an environmental impact from such signs in a rural community?
That's what I'm saying. I'm saying that SEQA is constrained by the limits of the county's discretion in the entitlements that it is processing right now. So if you were considering an entitlement or, or type of approval that contemplated signs along a highway, then your discretion would be bound by whatever code or ordinance governed those signs. But in the absence of any such ordinance or with an ordinance that makes here commercial by right, it's a permitted by right use, then you're limited to the objective criteria that are set forth in that, in that code.
And what would you say the objective criteria are before us now? What, what, what can we decide today under SEQA?
You can decide issues that are set forth in the required findings for a parcel map. Is it imposing traffic safety issues with respect to the onsite access? Is it a, you know, is it made for the, the intended purpose under, that's set forth under your, under your code? I think it's, what is it? 17 point something? I forget what. 17.36.020. Oh, I'm sorry, that's the development of the site permitted by right. I think your staff could speak more specifically to the findings and requirements for a parcel map division. But I think, you know, that the subject of debate we've been having back and forth right now today is can you get into issues of building design and, you know, what the parapets look like and what color is the, is the paint on the building and all of that? And all of that, none of that is relevant to a parcel map division, I think is the point that staff has been trying to make. All of that comes into play in the later building permit process. And again, that's limited by the objective criteria that are set forth in the county's own code for a building permit. And if, and a building meets all of those criteria, the county must grant the building permit.
Well, then, and I'm, I'm sorry.
No, you're good. These are great questions.
From your book, I should mention, her office is, I wrote the book on the subject.
One of them, yeah.
Now, how much I gave up by saying that, I don't want to say. But from your book, I draw the authority that a project is not exempt from SEQA if it can be fairly argued that significant adverse environmental impacts may occur in the reasonably foreseeable chain of events beginning with the proposed action.
That's a correct statement of the law and that, that pertains to the initial question of whether a project is exempt under some categorical or statutory exemption. And if it's not, then SEQA applies. And we're not disputing that SEQA applies here. What I'm saying is that the range of discretion that the county has here with this particular parcel map is constrained by its own ordinance. And that was that provision of the Public Resources Code that I read that, that says, the legislature has said, SEQA doesn't expand the powers to mitigate that you don't already have.
You're saying that under the, that when we do an initial study, when the planning department does an initial study, and if it follows the SEQA guidelines and asking all those questions, all those questions can become irrelevant if the county on its own could not mitigate the, the effects of those.
That, that's exactly what I'm saying. And that's what that provision of the, of the Public Resources Code says. It says.
And what?
SEQA only applies to the extent that the agency has the authority to mitigate under its own ordinances.
Do you have a, a case citation that, that actually would apply to this situation?
The Navy Broadway Complex Coalition versus City of San Diego. It's more recent than our book, so it's not mentioned in our book and I don't have a pin site for you, but that's the name of the case.
Okay.
I would, wanted to touch a couple of other points that in the discussion between yourself and staff regarding the mandatory findings of significance not being included in the analysis, I would just note that the Appendix G checklist, which is the standard but not required starting point for an initial study and negative declaration, those questions, just like all of the others under the checklist, you would only check the box for potentially significant impact if they were actually invoked, if there were actually substantial evidence in support of an argument that they were invoked. So there's not, so the word mandatory is a little misleading there in that it's not mandatory that you check the box. It's mandatory that you find it significant if those criteria are met. And that's what they mean by mandatory. So there's not procedural failure here by your staff in not answering that question.
What about, what about their failure to put in anything about aesthetics?
Well, again, the aesthetics arguments aren't relevant here because the county doesn't have the authority to impose mitigation measures.
We couldn't even look to what the county would require, say, if there is in the, in the building permit process?
You are only allowed in the building permit process to require that the applicant meet the objective criteria. And if they don't meet the objective criteria, then you would reject their application or tell them to come back with a modified project. But you can't say, okay, I don't like the color. I want to change the color. I don't like this little bit of gingerbread on the top. I want to change it to something else.
Are you familiar with the sign ordinance, Commissioner Lattish? As far as road frontage and how much signage they're allowed to have?
Slightly.
Okay. I just want to make sure that you know that we do. When they get to the building process, they have to comply with that ordinance in the county.
That's correct. There are some performance standards that will, and that will be looked at by planning as part of the permit review process.
I have one final point I'd like to make on the aesthetics issue.
Can I have a question? So Rominger versus County of Kalusa would not lead you in a different direction?
I'm vaguely recalling that that was a mitigated negative declaration case dealing with a subdivision.
Well, it, it mentions that Public Resource Code 21080 mentions tentative subdivision maps as being discretionary.
Right. And this is not a tentative subdivision map?
No, but it, I'm drawing an analogy. And so you would say, okay, under Rominger, and I'm not familiar completely with the facts of Rominger, that it involved a tentative subdivision map, that the only environmental questions that would be relevant under all the, the, the guidelines questions would be ones having to do with subdivision, tentative subdivision maps?
Well, typically, all of the questions under the Appendix G guidelines are relevant to a tentative subdivision map because of the broad scope of issues that a tentative subdivision map covers. You know, it's everything from roads and access and design guidelines and, and all of the other stuff that comes into play, whereas a parcel map or a parcel split is, is a different entitlement. So, but if there were a restriction in the planning and zoning law pertaining to subdivision maps or in a county's own code relating to subdivision maps and how it processes it, then that restriction would carry over into what an agency could mitigate under SEQA.
So it appears what you're saying then is that if there's, if the question before us having to do with a parcel map, there really is very little that SEQA can do to help protect the environment, even though there are possibly significant adverse environmental impacts that will occur down the, the known chain of events.
The case law is pretty consistent in saying that SEQA is not, it's not a land use planning statute. It's designed. It's designed as an informational disclosure tool. And of course, there is the substantive mandate to mitigate for significant impacts. But as I read in that, in that provision of the Public Resources Code, that authority to mitigate is constrained by an agency's own ordinances and codes.
But it would not be a violation of SEQA if we applied the SEQA procedures and the developer reasonably agrees to mitigation effects that, that mitigation measures that the public and the planning department-
A developer and an agency can always enter into voluntary understanding or agreement to modify a project, but the effect of SEQA and the, the substantive mandate, as it's called, and our book discusses it, is the authority to require changes in a project or require the adoption of alternatives, or to deny it outright in response to environmental impacts. And where you do not have that authority to condition a project, change it, or deny it in response to those environmental concerns, then SEQA does not have an effect.
There would, there would be no violation of SEQA or violation of state law if the county were to republish its initial statement and set forth questions as, having to do with, uh, with aesthetics and noise control and et cetera, and get public impact on that and have then the chance for the developer and the public to get together with the planning department and see if a thing can be worked out so that there is a mitigated negative declaration.
Well, when you use the term mitigated negative declaration, it suggests that there's a significant impact that requires mitigation-
Well, I know.
And we haven't reached that point yet.
I understand.
But no, it wouldn't be a violation of SEQA, but it's also not triggered here. There are standards in SEQA for requiring the recirculation of a negative declaration, and that is the disclosure, identification, discovery of new or more severe significant impacts or substantial change in the mitigation that's required to address a significant impact. And those conditions are not met here. The county can always voluntarily do it, but it's not required here, and, you know, I, I wouldn't encourage it because the conditions aren't met triggering that, that recirculation.
Let me ask you if, if the scenic vista question that's, that's asked-
I would love to address that question.
You do not, the, the property itself does not have to be a scenic vista if the development would block a scenic vista that was behind that property, correct?
Uh, that question in the SEQA guidelines checklist presumes that there is some sort of community or designated understanding that there is a scenic vista, and you used the example of the Grand Canyon, of course, that would be a scenic vista. And then the state also has this process for designating official scenic highways. And so I think that's what that question in the guidelines checklist is, is aimed at getting at. You know, are you going to build a, a store in front of one of these scenic turnouts on a highway that everybody likes to pull over and take pictures of? The case law is quite clear, though, that affecting any one person's individual view from their property is not a significant impact under SEQA, not even five people's view. The view from your home of any particular thing, particularly where that is not officially designated as a scenic vista or scenic resource, is not a significant impact.
But Appendix H on the SEQA guidelines, which the applicant fills out, question 22 says whether, would it result in a change in scenic views or vistas from existing residential areas or public lands or roads? We have a public road here, we have a residence that's directly across the street. Seems to me, I, I don't know how the developer answered that question, because we don't have that before us, the commission doesn't. But that would seem to apply. Certainly, when you get down to the, I mean, the third aesthetics question is whether the project would substantially degrade the existing visual character or quality of the site and its surroundings. And here we have a transition from pine trees and bare earth with trees in the background to a substantial store on a paved parking lot with attendant lighting and lit signs. It would seem to me that that would be, uh, a, a very serious question as to whether that would substantially degrade the existing visual character or quality of the site.
And, and if you were considering for the first time the rezoning of the site from open space or residential to commercial use, then I would argue that that question would be relevant. What is the effect of changing the existing environment from one that is not built to one that is built? But here, it's already designated for commercial use, that, that means that the general plan and zoning, when the county first took that action, presumed and intended that it changed from a non-built environment to a built environment at some point in the future.
But the answer to that question, the answer to that question would probably, would, would you agree would be yes?
I wouldn't agree, no.
Why not?
Because as your staff have pointed out, it is in already within the context of a developed area. There are-
Have you, have you seen the site?
I drove by it this morning.
And it looked, looked west from the road?
Yes. I, I drove by it and made a point of checking it out.
A nice tree line there.
Yeah. I, this is one of those questions that is difficult to deal with under SEQA because it is very much a sort of beauty in the eye beholder, and I'm not going to dispute that it's an attractive site. But what I'm saying is that to meet the significance conclusion, that it's a significant adverse change in the visual character of the environment, when you have already development around it and it's intended for commercial use, it's not a, a, an open and shut yes and no question here.
It's not open or shut. Okay. Well, how about create a new source of substantial lighter glare which adversely affect day or nighttime views in the area? We haven't heard yet from the developer whether they intend, as most general stores, I think Dollar General stores, leave their lights on all night or leave their signs on all night. But, um, we have now a vacant area with some pine trees on it, a line of trees behind, and we would now have parking lot lights, the lights of the store itself, the lights of signs. We don't know what the signs are going to be out on the highway.
All of those signs will be required to meet the sound, the county's sign ordinance, which is part of the ministerial building permit process. And so, of course, the county will not be able to and would not approve a lighting plan that would violate its own lighting standards. And so the answer to that question is no. It would not introduce a new source of lighter glare that can't be addressed because the county's ordinance already addresses it and would not approve a development that doesn't allow it.
The, the question is create a new source of substantial lighter glare which would affect, adversely affect day or nighttime views in the area.
And that is-
You, you're saying, no, it wouldn't because of what the county says?
I'm saying that it, that we don't consider whether it just changes the site at all. We consider whether it's a significant adverse change. And a significant adverse change would be light that escapes the property, that violates, intrudes on someone else's property, or that creates a, a glare hazard. And your lighting ordinance and sign ordinance restricts that condition from happening by requiring shielding and downward facing lights.
It's a substantial light or glare. I mean, you know, that-
But the key thing in, in an initial study and, and in, in the IR even, is the determination and setting significant thresholds. It's not just, is something new? Is something, does something exist?
Significant.
It's, does it meet a threshold?
Significant.
And here, the threshold is the county's sign and lighting ordinances. It will not exceed those thresholds, therefore it will not be significant.
So this question on the, on the SEQA guidelines should be rephrased?
I have a lot of tweaks I would make to the SEQA guidelines checklist if I were queen for a day, but-
Applying, applying the way that it's written now, I think it's pretty hard for you to-
The aesthetics, the aesthetics criteria in the checklist are somewhat unhelpfully vague in that you are dealing with an inherently subjective issue in a lot of cases. It's not always a question of, are you going to, you know, block or shade something or shine light into somebody's door? Sometimes it's a beauty in the eye beholder type question. And that's difficult to put a significance criteria on sometimes.
Okay. So you would say that it, the answer to that question, that question shouldn't even be asked, but if the question is asked, the answer should be no.
If there were not a lighting ordinance and there were not a sign ordinance, then the, potentially the answer to that question would be different. But here, the county's own ministerial building permit process imposes mandatory criteria that the applicant has to meet.
I submit that that's not the question that the, that the guidelines ask, but we obviously disagree.
Okay. And then lastly, I wanted to touch on your question regarding whether truck access had been analyzed, and I would just point you to page 13 of the traffic study that's attached to the negative declaration. They have a paragraph specifically addressing truck turning radius onto the, and access and determine that it's adequate.
I, but I think that was before they narrowed that road.
I don't think so, but I, staff could clarify that.
I, I believe staff has said that they have reviewed the new road and found it to be sufficient, that, that's in consultative.
Yes, and, you know, again, at Dollar General, it's a lot of these-
But I wouldn't, I wouldn't rely on the, on the traffic analysis.
Okay. Is there any other questions for me? Thank you.
Do you have any further things that you want to add?
I have some more questions for the developer, please.
Okay. Can you come on up so that he can ask you a few questions? Thank you.
What are your intended hours of operation?
Whatever the, whatever the zoning code allows, we would, we would-
Not specific, doesn't address?
Doesn't have specific?
Generally, they're open, uh, 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM.
Oh, you, I, I, would you be willing to, to commit Dollar General to 7:00 to 9:00 PM? Because a lot of them are open till 11:00. But the traffic analysis itself says that those were the proposed hours, but I don't know where it got that.
Um, no, they're, they need to be free to, to operate in a way that allows them to succeed. So if, if, if they're allowed to stay open to 11:00 and that's the pattern that the community supports, then, then they, they may do that.
And what are the possible hours that truck deliveries would be made to the store?
Um, there, there frequently are requirements on that. Uh, you know, you're not allowed to be there at 3:00 AM making noise in some jurisdictions. So-
So whatever the law allows is what you'd be doing?
Um, I would love to, that, to be honest, that's not an area where you can make promises. We don't control those drivers. Those are independent contractors in a lot of cases. Every effort would certainly be made to keep that during business hours. It's to everyone's advantage to have it during regular hours.
And what, what are, what are the signs that you have in, in mind?
Yeah. Uh, generally, they go with what's called a monument sign. It's got a, you know, a pedestal base and then a, um, you know, a, a sign box mounted on top of that. Um, it, the site plan shows that near the entryway, setback from the street a little bit. Uh, they're not, they're not overly large, they're not enormous.
So this would not be a tall sign to draw people in from the freeway?
Um, the, if you're, you're obviously in the mood to, to get a commitment out of me at this stage, and so I'm happy to do that. I would say that we would do a monument, a ground mounted monument sign.
And what lights and signs would be left on after the hours of operation?
Um, in a perfect world, we would turn every light off when something's closed. But, uh, you know, you get insurance requirements, you get police requirements, you know, there are safety issues. Uh, that's one where I'd have to say, you know, we'll do, I'm happy to commit to the minimum, but the county and, you know, the sheriff's department, they sometimes have input on that, and we have to comply.
So you wouldn't, there'd be no need for the signs themselves to be lit after operation?
Um, again, that's, I've, I've had sheriff's departments tell me they want the sign lit so they can identify a late night call to the area. I mean, it, it happens, it happens. So I'm, I'm not in a position to rewrite code on this one.
Okay. Um, I didn't find in the, in the traffic analysis any indication of how many vehicles pass this site during hours that the store would be closed. And I, I just, I doubt whether there's any need, commercial need for signs to be on. I think we're probably down to 50 cars or something, that's what.
I go around my house and turn off lights all the time after my daughter walks through, so I'm, I'm happy to, I like to see things turned off. But again, we have, we have requirements that I may not be able to vary.
And would alcoholic beverages be sold at the store?
Yeah, they serve, they sell beer and wine at most locations.
But not hard liquor?
Um, I'm, I'm sure they do in some jurisdictions. I haven't seen it, and I, I haven't seen a, an application for that for the store.
Okay. Um, and would your lighting be specifically designed to protect against light pollution into the night skies?
Oh, yeah, we, we have to do that, yeah. And like I said before, most modern fixtures do that anyways. It would be hard to find, you know, unless you're building a freeway that's using 30 foot light poles. It's hard to find something that really disperses light.
And there's a, there's a line of pine trees along the northeast side of the property. Would those be preserved?
Uh, towards the lumberyard.
Yeah.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, that's a, that's an, in fact, that, that, that property transition there, that embankment helps to kind of shield our site and makes it less visible. We're set down low there.
Mm-hmm. And what would be the working hours during the construction of the project, and how long would that construction take?
Um, working hours, again, I'm sure that there are county requirements on, on limits on that. I'm, I'm guessing there are weekend limits on that.
I think the building code actually has specific requirements for construction hours.
Yeah.
Okay. And how many design alternatives have you already established for a Dollar General store of this size? I know you've, we've seen pictures from around the country of-
Yeah, yeah. Um, they, they tend to stick to a, a similar building footprint. They try to keep that standard, it's a model that works for them. But we have varied the external appearance of this building based on community input.
And have you shared design alternatives with the public?
Um, unfortunately, the, the public meeting that the developer attended was before my involvement in this project. But yeah, I understand, they, they discussed design alternatives there.
And just to be clear, I'm, I'm not sure, are you with the developer, are you with Dollar General, or?
I'm with Rubicon Design Group. We were hired by the developer.
I see.
We do, we do permitting and, and planning issues.
Well, a year ago, someone named Jo Del promised Holly Mines an elevation plan, and according to her, uh, letter on, of April 20th, she still hasn't received it. So I doubt that the public has been cut in on these. Um, and what are the two existing Dollar General stores closest to West Point?
Um, I haven't measured that, but there are certainly some in the area. I think most people are aware, yeah.
And do you plan to generate and use any solar power at the store?
I haven't seen plans for that, yeah. I, I could point out that, uh, one of the, the Dollar General's business model is not to be a dollar store, not to sell dollars for, items for a dollar. Uh, but they're a small grocery store, and their, their goal is to capture, uh, uh, traffic that would normally have to travel out of the area, you know, 20, 25 miles to go to a Walmart or something, and now we're keeping that local. So I'm in favor of anything that, that limits car travel.
Um, oh, and I, I couldn't quite tell from the site plan where the truck deliveries would be made.
Uh, they would, uh, pull onto the site, just pull straight in, make deliveries along that, that south side of the, the long side of the building there, and then-
So at the back corner there?
Yes, yeah. Yeah, same with the, with the trash access. You know, those trucks would pull in there, and then they would reverse back into the L part of the driveway and pull out on the road.
And would the trash receptacle be masked from the view from the rest of the parking lot?
Um, I believe that there's a, a county requirement on that, so yes.
Yeah, it'll actually be housed in like a little-
Yeah, yeah, in a, in a standard enclosure, yeah.
Enclosure. I'm gonna say building, but it's not a building, it's an enclosure. Screened from view.
So, um, if I were foolish enough to be a pedestrian on Highway 26, I'd just make my way to the, to the entrance of the driveway and then use the, the, the crosswalk across the parking lot?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay.
And I, I think that's a, a, a good site element. I, I, as a planner, I hate to see things built that don't acknowledge what we know people are going to do. So they're going to, if, if somebody's walking in that street, they're going to walk onto the site, rather than walk through the detention base and the landscaping, there's a sidewalk there for them.
Um, and Jo Del promised Holly Mines a full-blown landscape plan, and is this as much, much as what we have for-
Well, this is, this is an engineering plan, but there are, there is landscaping that will be included on that. You asked before about that, that area, that sort of shaded area towards the front, that's a detention base, and then around there will be landscaping. So there's a landscape requirement, and we're, we're going to meet those requirements.
So if, if we were to send this matter back to the planning department for reconsideration, would your company be willing to discuss mitigation measures with the planning department and members of the public concerning issues such as building design and lighting and signing and hours and parking and truck deliveries and landscape? I mean, in other words, have a kind of a give and take roundtable discussion and see if you could come up with something that people can agree with?
I, I thought you were in charge of that right now.
Ah, no.
Um, we, I've, I've been trying to do that here, and, and I'm, I'm happy to do it, I mean, I, I-
The reason I, I bring it up is that the, you know, that there was this public meeting in West Point- The reason I bring it up is that, you know, there was this public meeting in West Point. Then there didn't seem to be much exchange of information after that and.
Well, except that we revised our building elevation.
Yes, I understand.
My concern there is that you're inviting me into a totally open-ended process with no clear timeline or outcome. And frankly, I have difficulty agreeing on behalf of my client to that process.
Well, if there were a definite timeline in the next two weeks where there'd be three meetings and see what you can hammer out?
You know, out of all due respect to the members of the public and their concerns, under what authority do they have? They're not an official-appointed committee.
I understand.
That just doesn't exist. You know, as a matter of fact, you know, there used to be design review in the county. There used to be a combining zone that required a whole additional review of commercial and industrial projects. In 1988, the County Board of Supervisors voted and adopted an ordinance abolishing design review, just for the very reasons that we're discussing now. I mean, it's arbitrary. We don't have guidelines. We don't have any policy in the general plan. There's nothing specific in the zoning that allows us to do what we want to do. I mean, I think we can all agree that, yeah, we, you know, we'd love to see, you know, the historic community maintained, but I just don't, I guess I'm just struggling with how we get there because we don't have a mechanism to allow us to do that. And again, are we really going to get anywhere if we start bringing every commercial project back to the individuals in the community?
Well, remember, we are dealing with West Point here and I'm a citizen.
So why is that any different than Valley Springs or Mountain Ranch or San Antwerp?
Well, okay, if you put the Dollar General store that's been put in Valley Springs with all that lighting that's on all that time with those glaring signs, you put it in the middle of West Point, I mean, I'm in Sheep Ranch. That's even more rural than West Point. That would be a glaring, literally, environmental disaster for West Point. And so.
But it's in some actual ordinance in the code that allows us that restriction. What if we weren't even talking about a parcel map? What are we going to do with a development on proposed parcel two? The map already exists. Somebody could come in with a building permit and we wouldn't be having this discussion at all.
I know, I'm concerned about that, but that's it.
So I'm saying, you know, I'm here, but I.
I'm going to bring it back for just a minute. Did you have any further questions or?
I have no further questions for the developer.
Okay. Commissioner Sisk, do you have any questions?
I have no questions.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to just take a break for a minute, let everybody just take a little break and a deep breath and then we'll come back. We'll be back at 10:45. I'd like to do at this time is go to public comment.
Madam Chairwoman, Robert Pakinger from the Public Works Department is here. He has some other commitments he needs to attend to. If there's any questions that the commission might have of the Public Works Department, maybe we could ask, could ask those now if Robert and then he'd be able to move on.
We would love for you to come up. Thank you, Robert.
Hello, good morning.
Good morning.
Why are you looking at me? I do, you've heard the question I've asked.
Yes.
There we go.
Yes, I remember the question you had. We have the state highway that's running and that was, there was a traffic study prepared by Katie Anderson and they looked at the situation on the state highway. That was submitted to Caltrans for their review. Caltrans has jurisdiction for any item on the state highway. According to the traffic study, they, page 13, they talk about truck turning requirements and I will have to assume based on the comments from Caltrans that that was sufficient for them to address the truck turning movements. That is a typical item that they do for traffic. They look at truck turning movements on the highway.
My only question on that one was, I thought it was after that traffic impact analysis that they narrowed the access road.
You're speaking about the onsite access?
Yes, right.
Okay, that, when we deal with more than one lot, there has to be a roadway that is constructed. The roadway is template L. It consists of two 12-foot travel lanes and then it has eight feet of parking on either side. Since there wasn't internal parking provided, the on-street parking is not, was not going to be required. The width of the travel lane onsite is not reduced in any way.
But and also the access, the curved access into that roadway?
The actual encroachment onto the highway is going to be pretty large. It'll have to meet the Caltrans standard for.
Remains the same.
Yes.
Because I'm concerned because I mean, I drive a fire truck sometimes and DMV specifically, you know, says, well, when you reach an intersection you can't get into, should you freer into the opposite lanes or, you know, where should you?
You can see by the way the site plan is prepared that there are flared entrance tapers going onto the site so that the vehicle is pulling off the road as they're entering into the site and then the curve to get onto the main road.
And then the Public Works conditions did include this thing about ADA access sidewalk and this plan is consistent with that requirement?
Right here, they're showing the circulation. When the construction plans are drawn, we'll make sure that the grades are ADA compliant.
Yeah, I was just, I was thinking about the crosswalk across the parking lot itself is not a problem.
That's, no.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we'll go to public comment. Public comment's limited to five minutes, but we welcome you to come up and speak.
Good morning. My name is Katrine Leiby and I am a West Point resident. And I'm here today on behalf of Holly Mines. I have a short comment to read from her. But before that, I'd like to make a couple of personal comments. We did have one public meeting in West Point to discuss the coming of Dollar General in our community. It was an hour meeting, it was very short. It seems like everyone here assumes that the entire population of West Point is really in favor of Dollar General and I don't think that that's quite accurate. Secondly, Mr. Joe Dell, who is the representative at that meeting of Dollar General, promised prompt answers to our questions and as Mr. Ladish stated, we never heard a word. Never responded to emails or repeated attempts to call. So I think the idea also that Dollar General is really willing to work with the community is not accurate. And I think that as community members, that we don't really feel that we've entered any kind of respectful exchange with this proposed new store. And that's disturbing to me. One last question I would have for you is, is there going to be a public comment period when the building permit is discussed? Is that something that happens? Is there an opportunity for the community to comment at any time besides now on any part of this project?
There is no public comment on a building permit.
Thank you, okay. Now I'd like to.
Can I just weigh in real quick on that?
Yes.
I will say that when they built the Dollar General in the Arnold area, before the building went in and the design review, they did take and hold several town hall meetings and take public comment at that time. And at that time, they did work with the community. So I just wanted to go on the record with letting you know that before they built, they did meet with the members of the community.
So you're telling me that there's the hope that perhaps we are going to have more community meetings or so there can be public input?
If this goes through, it wouldn't necessarily be county public input, it was them meeting with the community.
Okay, thank you for that.
I can't make any promises. I'm just telling you what my experience was.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So I have some pictures that I wanted to pass out. These are pictures of the roadway near the Jamestown Dollar General. And again, this is a letter written by Holly Mines, who could not be here today. She is very concerned by the lack of recognition in the staff report of the possible dangers faced by pedestrians and cyclists on Highway 26, many whom are likely to be children. Let me read two citations from the traffic impact analysis for Dollar General store on Highway 26, West Point, Calaveras County. Executive summary. Project impacts on alternative transportation modes. The project may result in some pedestrians walking along area streets, but most Dollar General store customers typically arrive by private automobile. Based on the results of a survey of a recently opened Dollar General store in the rural Tuolumne County community of Jamestown, the proposed project might attract three to four pedestrians per hour on a peak Saturday, one to inbound and one to outbound. This level of activity would not appreciably be different from that occurring today at other retail location stores on Highway 26. Project pedestrian activity would not present a safety hazard along Highway 26 or other area streets and improvements are not required. Bicycles and pedestrians facilities. Sidewalks do not exist today along the roads near the proposed Dollar General store and pedestrians and bicycles regularly mix with motor vehicles along the edge of a study, the study area roads. The streets in this area, including Highway 26, lack shoulders. The 2015 Calaveras County Regional Bicycle Pedestrian and Safe Routes to School master plan indicates no pathways are proposed along our project area. Both the traffic analysis and the final staff report from the planning department conclude that no improvements are required along Highway 26 for approval of this project. But neither report acknowledges the close proximity of West Point Elementary School to the store. Point two mile, about one block or four minutes walking time between the school and the store. In addition, Highway 26 is the route taken by logging trucks to transport logs to the mills along Highway 49, mostly by SPI, which owns large tracts of land out on Winton Road. With young, unaccompanied children from the elementary school facing the temptation to visit the Dollar General store before going home after school, shouldn't there be an analysis of the possible dangers they might face, walking or riding their bikes along a road that has neither sidewalks nor shoulders along the road and possibly crossing the street without proper precautions? Furthermore, the intersection of Bald Mountain Road and Highway 26 has no marked crosswalks. I passed out to you a photograph taken from Google Maps showing the location of the Jamestown Dollar General store along Highway 49 in Tuolumne County. The report claims that the analysis of this setting led them to conclude that no improvements are needed for the road in West Point. The traffic study mentioned only pedestrian traffic during peak Saturday hours, but children coming from school will be crossing the road during school days, Monday through Friday. Wouldn't you agree that these two settings do not resemble each other and are not suitable for comparison purposes? Notice the very wide shoulders along Highway 49. Both stores are located in rural areas, but the resemblance ends there. One is along a highway and the other is located in a residential community. I urge you to revisit this safety issue before approving the project. Holly Mines, thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Colleen Platt with MyValleySprings.com and the Calaveras Planning Coalition. Just want to make sure those all get around here, thank you. I've written a lot of comments already, which I hope you've read some of them in the report. There's a lot of concerns and a lot of issues, so I'm not going to repeat all of them, just some of the highlights. Before I forget, Katrine's comment on the traffic study reminded me of a comment that we made that was not addressed in the staff report at all. And I don't know if you've looked at the traffic study at all or our comments. From April 17th on page 14, where we pointed out a major error in the traffic impact study and the existing setting information. They talk about the access driveway as an intersection and they talk about it having two stop signs, which is absolutely incorrect. And you don't have to be an expert witness or an expert to know that, that there are not two stop signs there. Their description says, "Study area intersections, a state Route 26 project access is a four-way intersection controlled by a stop sign on the eastbound site access and westbound Caltrans Maintenance Station approach." That is not correct. And that is the basis for their study of the access to Highway 26.
What do you see as the significance of that error? I mean, is there, cars coming out of a driveway have to yield the right of way?
Right. I'm not a traffic engineer, so I do admit, I don't know.
There is an error in there, but I don't know if it's relevant.
If they're assuming that traffic is stopping at stop signs? It's not.
We'll ask the planning department.
So and if you look at their diagrams in the traffic study, they have diagrams of that as an intersection. They show all the traffic going all these different directions with stop signs. That's not the existing situation there, so it just seems incorrect to use that. Anyway, let me get back to the other, the other things. As we've repeated, we are not project opponents. We're strictly trying to make this a good project and a good project for the community. A new business should add to, not detract from a community, especially when it's an historic community like West Point, very rural, has pride, has a lot of pride in what it is and its activities. So we just are trying to make this a good project and a good fit for the community. We're disturbed that the developer did not get back to the community with their promised designs. They said they were going to work with them and they didn't. The first time the public knew of this was in the staff report, the first design here. So it concerns us that this was not, there was no effort made to get back to the community. The design looks better to us, but we live in Valley Springs, so anything would look better to us. I can't speak for the West Point community, but we would have been delighted to have had this in Valley Springs ourselves, but we're not West Point. We feel those people should have been consulted and talked to. Other than the building design, we still feel there's significant aesthetic impacts that have not been addressed under CEQA. The public comments did raise significant new CEQA effects that were not addressed in the initial study and negative declaration. The handout that I gave to you is just to show there are special concerns in this community. It's just not any old community. This is a historic center in the new general draft plan, which I realize is draft, but this is the intention of the community. It is also a California registered historic landmark since 1937. The sheets I handed out to you show the registration date. The location is the city of West Point. It's not one spot, it's an area.
Are there actual boundaries to a historic?
They don't list boundaries, but they do list directions to get there and they say the intersection of State Highway 26 and Main. the intersection of State Highway 26 and Main Street. And they give you a mile marker, and you can drive there, and you can find it's just south of the next intersection up at the stop road that Katrine was mentioning, Bald Mountain Road. It's just south of that. So actually, 26 intersects Main Street on the other side of town also, but they're referring to this first intersection. If you look on a-- pardon.
What you just gave us about the historic landmark mentions the California Environmental Quality Act. Does any specific requirements flow from this being a historic?
Other than what it says there, that the effect of the designation gives limited protection, that's just what it says on the state's website here. It says environmental review may be required under CEQA if the property is threatened by a project, which I would consider a historic town under possible threat of a commercial development and a historic landmark. So it seems to me it would deserve some CEQA aesthetic review on just that basis alone if it wasn't for all the other bases. So we've brought up the impact, the potential negative impacts to aesthetics, visual character, and the nighttime views. I think you've all received photographs that I've taken of the Valley Springs store and all the lights there. This is what is allowed under county code. We don't have a lighting ordinance. We have one sentence in our, what do they call them, performance standards. We have one sentence in performance standards is the only thing we have. Exterior lighting shall be shielded and directed so it doesn't shine onto adjoining residences. Doesn't say it won't glare into the sky. It doesn't say that in our code. It doesn't say it's not going to glare into the street. We don't have a lighting ordinance, so the only thing that can protect us is CEQA, is the CEQA mitigations, and that's why we need to do this. As the commissioner points out, the Valley Springs store would be totally inappropriate with the amount of lighting there up in West Point. It's awful. I mean, it's even awful for Valley Springs. We've got, you know, three large brightly lit yellow signs, store signs, which are more than the sign ordinance code allows. I've measured it myself, so I don't think there's any enforcement there. We've got five tall parking lot lights and nine security lights high up on the walls shining out. Okay, that is, that's glare, and that is allowed under our code. So that is no protection at all. We need to do this under CEQA. I would suggest that you, as a planning commission, can include conditions for project approval. I included in two of my comments and the ones that I just sent recently. Calaveras County Code Title 16 subdivisions, Chapter 16.05 Parcel Maps, Section 16.05.020 Findings. The board finds that for the public safety and welfare and for orderly development consistent with the county general plan, it is necessary to require that conditions of approval be placed upon tentative parcel maps. Such conditions of approval shall be those necessary to protect the interests of prospective property owners and as necessary to serve the broader interests of the general public and its health, safety, and welfare. And it goes through more requirements than the last one, is any other requirements necessary to protect the public health, safety, and general welfare. Seems to me this gives you the authority to impose conditions on the project. If you didn't already have it under CEQA, which I think you have under CEQA because these are impacts that we have, serious lighting impacts to a historic town. I believe that the county is obligated to mitigate impacts. We've pointed out many impacts from the lighting and the signage, the glare. And we would just like to see your actions establish a process for how development in historic centers will occur in Calaveras County. And please give us a way to protect this historic resource of West Point. Thank you.
So I have a question on the, pertaining to the traffic impact analysis. It did deal with the blind corner at Winton, but it did so with some apparent inconsistencies. Page 16 of the traffic impact analysis notes that 250 feet is the minimum stopping distance at 35 mile an hour, and corner sight distance recommendations at 35 mile an hour is 385 feet. And then the traffic analysis says, "Looking north on SR 26, which would be toward Winton, the view is obstructed at roughly 286 feet." And then says, "The minimum sight distance recommendation will be satisfied." The way I see it, 286 feet is 100 feet less than 386 feet, which is the minimum sight How should the planning department deal with this apparent inconsistency?
I'm not the expert on that one, but I did notice that there is a blind corner just past that sight distance, which is, and I don't think people drive 35 miles an hour there either. I think they drive faster than that. So that may not be relevant, because traffic does come around a corner, and then you're at that 200 and whatever it is feet from the intersection, which will be adding truck traffic to that problem.
Again, I know you're not a traffic engineer, et cetera, but do you have any suggestions as to what this commission could do to solve the pedestrian problem, particularly of schoolchildren who apparently have a four-minute walk from their current school to where the store would be and with no sidewalks, et cetera? I don't see where that is before us today.
Yeah, I don't, I'm not a resident there either. I would think that the residents, maybe they have a plan, you know, perhaps they have a plan, a community plan that has ideas in that direction.
Sounds like a potential disaster, but I don't--
Yeah, a sidewalk leading to a highway with no shoulders is not wise. It would be nice to have a crosswalk there, but I don't know if you can address that in your comments.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Oh, I have one other question. In your written materials, which, the ones you supplied as public comment before, were you representing the planning coalition as well as My Valley Springs? It only showed My Valley Springs on.
Which comment are you talking about?
The comments that are part of the staff report that you've submitted on the--
We've submitted at least three comments on them. I'm trying to think of which one. I'm not sure.
Let's just put it this way. In everything that you have said so far in writing, and you are representing both My Valley Springs--
I believe I could say safely that yes, I represent both, because I'm a member of both. Okay, thank you.
And you make an argument about the draft general plan in your written comments, but the West Point community plan, which again is part of the draft general plan--
Right.
--provides that the town center should include high-traffic commercial businesses.
Correct, right. I'm not arguing that it shouldn't, but it's also in a historic center. And if you read the description of a historic center, development that occurs in that historic center is to be compatible with the surrounding historic center. That was our point there. Like I say, we weren't arguing against development, per se. We were arguing for development that's in the character of the historic center, which is in the draft general plan description of historic center.
Thanks.
Yes, thank you.
My name's Jessica, and I live in the West Point-Wilseyville area as well. Let's see. So thank you, first of all, for being here. I know this is a big challenge for us, me especially, and Gina for putting all this together. It's a huge presentation. I know that takes a lot of energy, and for putting our comments in there and actually reading them. So I've been pulling, you know, this has been pulling at my heartstrings and my hairline for over a year now. And let's remember that West Point is a community of people and not just a business opportunity for corporations to exploit. So Dollar General's been preying on small rural towns all over the Sierra foothills, looking for easy, cheap locations where the community and local governments' hands are tied, where we are today. We're finding hard paperwork. We're having a hard time having something to stand on. So thankfully, we have a new general plan that's coming out that's deeming us a historical center, so hopefully that will give us a little say. And I can give you dozens of reasons why allowing Dollar General into West Point's a terrible idea, but I don't know if that really matters anymore, because I can't put that in a CEQA document. So I don't know if the million dollar, you know, the millionaire CEO is here today to defend Dollar General as being a good fit for our small community, but, and how it won't hurt our local businesses and how they won't feel the impact. And so that being next door to Ace Hardware, that's a tricky one, because if I can buy a broom and Windex and a hammer and cat food at Dollar General, why go to Ace anymore? So he is going to feel it. And Al's a great guy, and he doesn't want to step on anybody's toes, so he's probably not going to stand up and defend that issue. But in regards to aesthetics, that was a big one in that town hall meeting, and it was kind of a shame. It was a quick meeting, not everybody's voices were heard. And it's not a matter of the building design that's going to ruin our town, it's what's inside of the building that is going to forever impact West Point. So I also know that I'm a part of the universe and not the center of it, and our town wants choices. But if Ace and the General Store and the Wilseyville Store are having to change their hours or lay off employees or change their inventory because of Dollar General being cheaper down the road, we will feel that. So, and if all we're able to stand on today is the lot split. So Peter, you brought up a point. So is it three, it's 3.03 acres is the second parcel?
I believe that's right.
Something like, or just shy of that. So we're looking at a lot split that has, Dollar General's looking at somewhere 1.3 and the other one that's split. That's a huge commercial lot next door, three acres. So is there anything that we have to worry about in regards to safety? Or is there fencing that's going to keep children, traffic, littering, crime off that other lot? Does that matter? Is Dollar General not liable for anything that's happening over there from the parking lot to crimes happening on the Dollar General side of things? I'm not sure how that works exactly. But, and we're also going to have to consider the road modification, that we're going to be sharing that access with that 3.9 acre parcel potentially in less than a decade. There's going to be some big-time businesses coming in there. Because Dollar General, and today, if we allow the lot split, it's kind of opening up that for easier access for more businesses to come in. And there's a lot of negative comments, and unfortunately, people like to use their voices online, which is kind of useless in this. People need to come up to this microphone and choke their way through it, like, we all have to. And Facebook and this other social media garbage, there's a lot out there, and I'm sure you guys have seen it from the Enterprise on, and it's out there. So we can't be compared with San Diego or subdivision somewhere, or Temecula or Martel because we're West Point. We're different, and we're trying to stay that way. So if you let Dollar General in, it won't be long before we start to look like every other strip mall plaza on the West Coast that's creeping their way east into our Sierra foothills. So I'm asking you to consider our voices in your plan. And looking at this, there's been Dollar General's, there was one in the paper that just was cited on storm water runoff as well, so maybe in the environmental impact, making sure that geology soils is addressed, or the water quality, any runoff issues maybe need to be addressed in this paperwork before we move forward in the construction period, because if this keeps getting pushed into the summer, it may be not built until the winter. And we know we had a huge runoff this winter. So requiring that as well. And I think that's about what I can really get out, and it's a shame, you know, Joe Adell can't be here, that's that. And, you know, I think it is a good building design, but it doesn't necessarily make Dollar General a right fit for West Point. So thank you.
Thank you, Jessica.
Bill McManus. It's okay, I think I'll stray off the reservation a little bit, and maybe we can discuss tentative parcel map and lot split and all that. So, excuse me, I'm dealing with memory from a little over a year ago. We have a lot that is zoned commercial. I guess it's C2, you just call it commercial. And that lot is being split. And one piece of the lot is going to remain commercial, C2, and the other lot is going to, it doesn't say it in the, whatever this document is. The other lot is destined to be zoned CP.
Not in this application. There's no zoning amendment requested with this entitlement. The application includes a tentative parcel map to divide the currently commercial property. So there's no proposal to change the zoning. So both proposed parcels, one and two, will remain C2.
Oh, I thought I read something in the packet. It was like a 140-page packet on--
Sorry.
I think there, I thought there was a document in there that said that it was proposed to be changed to CP, the residual, the unbuilt.
No.
Oh, okay. Never mind.
Thank you.
Good morning, Marty Crane. I had to make some notes, so I'm going to read this, because this morning, there's so many things that are just setting my hair on fire. I'm sorry about that. But I just want to say, thank you, Commissioner Lattish, for your diligence in asking, researching, and representing the public concerns. You show a special sense of respect for our future, our rural neighborhoods, and I wanted to thank you for that. There was a comment about sidewalks that I don't recall who or where that came in, but it was, they'd rather drive. But I think that if you know the West Point area, you know that many people there don't have cars. They live there. This is a walking community, like it or not, good or bad, it's a walking community. Another thing that passed for me was that I attend a lot of different planning commission meetings and other meetings in the community. And private property rights, with regard to that, seems like decisions tend to land or lean in favor of the developer instead of the private property owner, usually. It just feels that way. So I'm glad that we're at least addressing this from the community feel of it. They can't all get here. We need someone to be the voice of them. Like I said, a lot of them don't have cars, and many don't have internet to be able to even see what's happening here. And if you don't have Comcast, you don't get this recorded meeting. Regarding the lighting, West Point's a small community with no need for city lighting. Tragically, West Point could soon be another Valley Springs aesthetically due to cumulative impacts. An example, Valley Springs Fitness Sitter. When they first put it in and you came around the curve, it blinded you. That was then, about 10 years ago. Now, flash forward to 2017, we have a storage facility, a shopping, another shopping center, a grocery store, and a large hospital clinic coming soon. We had two auto stores. One's now gone because of the new O'Reilly's and the expected Auto Zone, all with big lighting. Dollar General signs are more, no less attractive than the bright red O'Reilly's and other signs that we have, except at night, it's a different story altogether. Now, the lights of the fitness center no longer blind you. Why? Because of the added area lighting cumulative impacts. Shocking is not too strong a word for what one encounters when entering Valley Springs from the west on Highway 12 at night. 25 years ago, my twin three-year-old nephews visited from LA County, arrived late in the evening, had never witnessed a starry heaven. Our night skies are nothing like they were 25 years ago. They were so shocked, they were trying to count how many stars, and it was a blanket of stars. We should consider security lighting as well. Really bright lights create shadows for criminals in which to hide. And consider your eyes adjusting to the bright lights. That gives the criminal time to run away or sneak up on you. Back to cumulative impacts. They're usually generated by a lack of regard, and I submit respect for our rural communities. Also, I lived in Orange County for 24 years. I live here because of the rural nature. Calaveras County is, in general, is a scenic vista. Just ask any tourist. Calaveras County is in gen, in general, is a scenic vista, just ask any tourist. Thank you for moving forward with respectful consideration on behalf of our West Point community and our other communities, because what happens in one community, happens in another if we are not watchful, and like I said, there, you are the, the gate at the guard, the guard at the gate, um, because we can't always be there. Uh, we should always try to do better, especially while we work on updating our documents. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning, Tom and Fasino Calveras Planning Coalition.
Good morning.
The most important thing the commission could do at this point is to direct the planning department to meet with all those concerned, to nail down in writing the acceptable design, lighting, parking, and pedestrian safety solutions. This will help keep peace in the community, improve customer relations, and help the reputation of all the commissioners and the supervisors who support this approach. Why do I recommend that? Well, first, let me remind you that last month, I circulated for you folks, uh, this document, mitigated negative declarations from OPR, I hope you had a chance to review it. Um, in that document, it explains the fair argument test, and it says, quote, "If a fair argument can be made on the basis of substantial evidence in the record, that a project may have a significant adverse environmental impact, even if evidence also exists to the contrary, then an EIR is required." It goes on to talk about public comments and their influence on that determination, and it states on page seven, "If those comments include substantial evidence, a potential environmental effect may occur despite the project revisions or mitigation measures included in the MND. The lead agency must either require further revisions to the project, which would effectively avoid or mitigate that effect, or if that is not possible, prepare an EIR."
I have a question on that. How can they require mitigation? Can't they say, unless you do this mitig, agree to this mitigation, we will require an EIR? Isn't that the only way they can require something like that?
That, yes. Now, it's notoriously hard to defend an MND for projects with aesthetic impacts, because the testimony of non-experts constitutes substantial evidence. The leading case in this area is Pocket Protectors versus City of Sacramento in 2004, um, where the court ruled that relevant personal observations of area residents on non-technical subjects may qualify as substantial evidence for a fair argument. Now, there are many examples, if you had a chance to review this document, you'll see in it, that there are many examples of MNDs that failed on historic or aesthetic impacts. Um, they include Ocean View Estates Homeowners Association versus Montecito Water District in 2004, Architectural Heritage Association versus County of Monterey in 2004, and League for Protection of Oakland's Architectural and Historical Resources versus City of Oakland in 1997. Just recently, uh, the Georgetown Preservation Society versus County of Eldorado was decided. In that case, uh, an MND approval, MND approval was vacated-
I want you to make sure that everybody understands when you say, an MND.
MND, mitigated negative declaration. We're reviewing a mitigated negative declaration, this project's based on mitigated negative declaration. An MND approval was vacated by the court based upon testimony by Georgetown residents that the Dollar General Store would have a significant aesthetic impact on the historic district. Now that case took a year to decide after project approval. That's a year without profits and lots of expenses for Dollar General. I hope we can learn from other counties and not repeat their mistakes. So there is some really good news here. You have options, as, as Colleen explained, you have authority in your zoning code to condition the tentative maps, I won't review, the tentative parcel maps, I won't review that.
But those, those conditions really do not include everything that would be included in the questionnaire in the initial study, correct? I'm, that, do you see a clear authority for us to impose, uh, to require, or at least to ask the questions about aesthetics, uh, from that?
Sure, let me, let me explain. It says, "Conditions of approval may include, but not are, but are not limited to." So the enumerated ones are not the limits, they are, um, uh, they are, it's, it's a much more open-ended opportunity there. Now, the first-
Would you say then that that, that opens the door for the full, uh, area of questioning provided by the guidelines on aesthetics and noise and everything else, even if the, the, assuming that the county building requirements and this sort of thing don't cover everything that might be covered?
Exactly, and you can, we can, we can go even farther than that, it's not even that obscure, because item E enumerated there says, "Any other requirements necessary to protect the public health, safety, and general welfare." All of these aesthetic concerns, historic district concerns, lighting, pedestrian safety, that's all under the general welfare. So you have express authority here, and of course you have implied authority under the police powers. So, there is no, I don't, there's no question in my mind that you could do this. Now, there's a couple of ways you can do this, and, um, uh, one is what I would call the hard way. Um, you can identify mitigations and include it in a mitigation agreement, uh, if you need samples of mitigation agreements in this document, they provide samples from other counties, you can follow those. Um, you'd recirculate the mitigated negative declaration and have this hearing again, it would take a little bit longer. Much less than the year of litigation, but it would take a little longer. Now, there is another option. I call it this, the, uh, the no-fault option. Um, in the, uh, uh, secret guidelines, uh, you don't have to recirculate, uh, a mitigated negative declaration if, uh, according to secret guideline 15073.5, "Measures or conditions of project approval are added after circulation of the negative declaration, which are not required by SEQA, which do not create new significant environmental effects, and are not necessary to avoid, and necessary to mitigate an avoidable significant effect." What does that mean, Tom? Okay, what that means is, the folks at OPR know how the real world works. They know that consultants and planners and counties don't like to change the, their conclusions in their negative declarations. They get feisty when that happens, right? What they, and they also know that people in communities don't really want to have to go to court and prove that these impacts are significant and try and get mitigation that way. What this allows you to do is say, "Okay, county, you can keep your mitigated negative declaration just the way it is."
We, we don't have a mitigated negative declaration now, we just have a negative declaration.
Okay. Yeah, actually, there are mitigation conditions on it, or associated with the roadway. So, okay, anyway, so, you can keep your negative declaration the way it is, and you can also negotiate with the community to try and resolve these other issues, and include them as conditions of approval of the project. That way, if you, if you did that today, what you could do, and this is what I would recommend, as the developer has suggested, that there's some concerns about timelines, continue this meeting today to a time certain, whether that's two weeks, or four, or four weeks, or six weeks, whatever you, planning determines is, is suitable. Have the developer meet one more time, vet the changes in the project with the folks in the community, and see if they can resolve these issues and get them in writing, and come back to you with those. That way, you, you don't have to recirculate the EIR, the mitigated negative declaration, you don't have to, um, uh, uh, have this, an open-ended process. But you give the community a chance to, the developer a chance to vet these concerns with the community, get something in writing that makes them satisfied, and bring it back to you. I think it would be great if the planning commission adopted a problem-solving approach like this, rather than an adversarial approach.
What would be the role of the planning department in that procedure?
I would hope that there would be someone there to help hash out in writing the, uh, the, to, to convert what might be a colloquial, um, discussion into written terms. Maybe county council would want to be there, that'd be okay, too.
And, when you say in writing, so you would come out, end up with a mitigated negative declaration with the things that the people had agreed upon? Is that how?
You, you would have conditions of approval for this project that the people agreed upon, yes. Based on, uh, the authority in, uh, 1605.020.
So would that be then out of the context of SEQA?
That way, you, that, that would be one way of interpreting it, yeah.
Excuse me?
That would be one way of looking at it, yeah, yeah. The idea here, so those are your options, basically, you can go, you can do it through the SEQA process, and, and amend the mitigated negative declaration, then you're going to get all kinds of arguments and angst around here. Or you could do it in a, a way that's a little more expeditious, um, and apply it through the conditions on the tentative parcel map. Those are both options. Um, I like both of them better than, than some of the other options that would come down the pike, um, otherwise. So, that's my recommendation.
Thank you. Is there any further public comment today? Casey, and then we're going to close, uh, public comment, and we're going to go back to Gina and also the applicant for any rebuttals that they may have.
Thank you, Derek Wilson with Rubicon Design Group. Uh, I, I think I can keep this brief. First, I, I'm sympathetic to Ms. Platt's, uh, uh, reading of the traffic, uh, report, but I would argue that there is no mistake there. Uh, I think there was a professional shorthand in some of the terminology, uh, that section that she cited as having an error, uh, was under, uh, a subheading titled intersections, so it was referring to the nearest project intersection, an intersection that serves the project, and that is indeed a four-way stop.
Uh, wait a minute, wait a minute, I mean, it, it describes, specifically describes what it says is the intersection, and it's the exit from this property and the exit from Caltrans, and it says it has stop signs.
I, I think that section would benefit from a diagram showing exactly the road section they're talking about, but, uh, we're talking about, uh, traffic engineers-
I don't know that it's an important issue, but I, I would not, I would not say that they don't have an inaccuracy in there.
Yeah, okay, that's not how I read it. Um, as far as the, uh, as far as the public meeting process, uh, I think we're assuming that, as, as Mr. Fasino, I believe, um, uh, suggested, uh, he's assuming that, that some agreement would be possible on a short timeline. Uh, my experience is that, uh, it would be unlikely that we'd get, uh, prompt agreement on a building design, that's a very subjective, uh, uh, measure, um, and somebody who missed that meeting could rather than come to the next hearing and say that they weren't included. Uh, so as I said before, it's a very open-ended process that I think, uh, doesn't necessarily, uh, lead to a, to a better outcome. Um, as well as, you're also asking us to overturn, uh, the existing planning code, which I would say reflects the community's input, that's where that code comes from. It's designed to protect the community, it's based on, on community input over the years, uh, and we're adhering to that, so, I think that's the standard we have to design to.
When you have a Dollar General store in West Point, if half the community is disgusted with the way that the developer is perceived as not having responded to the community, which is, there, there is a perception out there now, and looks on some people's part, that promises were made of design changes and talking about them, and, "Oh, well, you can have gables." Well, there's no gables, uh, and never-
But design changes were delivered.
Excuse me?
Design changes were in fact delivered, that, that-
Design changes were delivered to the planning department, but the people in the community who were promised those design options were not, so-
I think you're making my point, that we could go back and forth forever, it's a very open-ended process.
No, no, there wasn't many much back and forth, there was back.
It, it, input was received from the community and the design was modified.
The, the community was promised, I, I, this is the last time I, I need to say it, the community was promised a chance to review elevations, in fact, one of the communications said, "Attached are the elevations," and they weren't there, and the person that received that communication said, "I didn't get them, please send them." They never got them. So the perception amongst a lot of the community apparently is, the developer is hardballing this, and not, not caring about the community designs, and the fact that it just, that you're willing to comply with county ordinances and other respects, it looks somewhat-
We have no other code to design to.
Excuse me?
We have no other code to design to, that's the standard.
No, but you have many, at least three or four that I'm aware of, alternative designs for this particular, uh, floor plan, that you could have been discussing with the community in the last year and a half, and you have not. So for you to say that, that, "Oh my gosh, this is just opening a, a morass of time," when the developer could have been dealing with these people for the last year and a half or so, uh, seems a little far-fetched.
Okay, that, that's all I have.
Okay. So, can I just ask you a quick question?
Sure.
I know whenever the Arnold Store was built, I don't know if it's the same people, but they did hold town hall meetings with the community before the store was built and worked with them on some of the design effects, is that something that would be done?
At, at this stage, we're hoping to get an approval and move ahead with the project.
Okay.
Uh, I, I would say that in general, my, my company prefers public interaction, I think it leads to, to smoother hearings. Um, in this case, we're talking about splitting a parcel, and I, I don't think that it was ever envisioned that this would become a design discussion.
Okay. Um, I understand your statement, I, and I, obviously I get that, but on the other flip side of that, you've heard a lot of the concerns from public members about the lighting and things like that, and I know you can't make a full-on commitment, you're not, you don't have to make a commitment, but those are things that you've heard here today, are those things that would be taken into consideration, complying with obviously county codes? Okay.
Uh, I'm, I'm more than happy to, uh, pass on to cross-development, the, the developer, what those concerns are, and, and try to get some, uh, agreement from them on how they want to proceed.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Okay, um, I'm going to go ahead and close the hearing and bring it back to the commissioners for-
You did, you did let me have more time to ask Gina questions, remember, from before?
I changed my mind. So, I'm going to close the public process, bring it back, and then we're going to have discussion with the commissioners, and that would mean you talking with Gina.
Okay, that's great.
Okay, so we're going to hear from Tim and Gina now.
So the, uh, the fourth aesthetic question was this, would it, would it create a new source of substantial light or glare which would adversely affect day or nighttime views in the area? And, why you didn't ask that question is what? What's the reason?
I, I think we, we did look at that question, and our response was, yes, there would be some additional light. Is it substantial? And we believe that it is not, we've got a site that is zoned commercial, anticipated that there, we, commercial development in the area, there is lighting that would be expected, um, and that, and that there, but it's not substantial.
Well, it, it's, I think whether it's zoned commercial is irrelevant to this question, it's whether it would create a new source of substantial light or glare. There isn't anything there now, there isn't a single light bulb on this property, and we were going to have, we don't know how many lights there are going to be out there, because, uh, this gentleman is not able to tell us exactly what's, what's going to be done. Um, and, we're going from nothing to a Dollar General store with its parking lot lights and its, you know, it, to say that it would not create a new source of substantial light or glare, at least create a risk of substantial glare.
Well, I, you know, it, it boils down to the word substantial. Yes, there will be new lighting. Is it substantial? Uh, you know, and, and our interpretation of that is that no, it would not be if it is properly shielded, which we would ensure through our building permit review process, and, and that, um, but that any new lighting is not necessarily a substantial.
I understand that, but, uh, I'd submit-
But although that's too-
This is worthy, worthy of at least asking the question.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, I, I, it seems to me that to assume that a Dollar General store is not going to create new source of substantial light or glare in a rural community with one, uh, store next to it that has very minimal lighting, is remarkable. Um, the, as to the traffic impact analysis, it said the planned store hours are 7:00 AM to 11:00 PM, do we really have a source for that? Okay, and did you base your analysis on those, on that statement? I mean, that, that those would be the hours?
That was the analysis. It was done by the traffic engineer.
No, I meant...
But yes, we relied on that statement, and I think as the representative of the applicant state of day, that's the typical hours that they operate. In some cases, it's less than that.
Was it nine or ten? I've forgotten.
He said probably nine o'clock, but they looked at potentially being open until 11:00 for the traffic analysis.
Okay. And is there any significance, in your view, of the statement that there's a four-way intersection controlled by stop signs?
Clearly, there are no stop signs there, but the significance of that is probably, you know, not all that great. It's a throughway on Highway 26. The two driveways that come to that must stop, so it has the effect of having a stop sign. So it's a, you know, two-way stop intersection from the two side streets, two side driveways coming into it.
And on the other hand, this inconsistency in the traffic impact analysis that states that the minimum sight distance recommendation is 300, corner sight distance at 35 mile an hour is 385 feet. Then as I read it, it says, "That's satisfied by the fact that it's obstructed at roughly 285 feet."
So, I went and read that because I was curious, you know. And I'm not exactly sure what that means. The minimum requirement is 250 feet, and the corner sight distance at 35 is 385 feet. And then they turn around and say that 285 meets the minimum standards, which I would say is 250.
They're talking about two different standards.
Two different standards, and they meet one of them, and I'm not sure the implication of the other one.
Yeah, it looks like the corner sight distance is 100 feet short, but they don't, they don't deal with that. Is this, is this of significance to the planning department?
We relied then on Caltrans review of this document to determine if there are any additional mitigation measures, if they concur with the findings of this analysis. And they are the traffic experts, especially when it comes to a state highway. They concurred with the findings and agreed that no additional improvements, other than the standard encroachment requirements, would be required, and so we relied on that finding from them that there wasn't any deficiencies in this analysis.
And given the anticipated construction and the anticipated post-construction truck deliveries and customer traffic, you didn't think that there was a need to ask about ambient noise or greenhouse gas emissions?
No, we didn't.
I wonder about that. Perhaps I misunderstand what they mean, that the initial study states the project will not produce any greenhouse gas emissions. Are you thinking that the building itself will not? This is on page 10 in the initial study. I mean, all of a sudden, we are going to have diesel trucks idling in the parking lot, making deliveries and this sort of thing. I would, I would think that that would be producing greenhouse gas emissions compared to what we have now.
Greenhouse gas analysis is a challenge for many rural counties. We have not adopted standards, thresholds of significance. We looked at this in general, it's a relatively small-scale development. Typically, where we have thresholds, a development like this would probably not trigger levels of significance. But since we don't have any standards, we're looking at this in more of a general context. We believe that the provision of additional shopping opportunities in the community will reduce vehicle trips and essentially balance the increase in traffic. Yes, there will be exhaust emissions from temporary construction traffic as well as deliveries. There will be, you know, overall energy outputs from heating and cooling and lighting of the structure itself.
But it will produce some greenhouse gas emissions, but your position would be that it balances out?
It balances some degree, I mean, pretty much unless it's clearly described as being carbon neutral. They're generating their own power, they're, you know, it's all solar powered, you know, you're not going to have no increase. But the significance level, I mean, every time you fire up your lawnmower, there's, you're putting up greenhouse gases. And so, but is it significant? Cumulatie, everything we do, yes, to a degree that the project itself needs to mitigate its own impacts. You know, we're looking more at community-wide, you know, county-wide measures to reduce. And one of the things we have proposed in the new general plan is to do a county-wide greenhouse gas analysis and then look at comprehensive measures that we could take. The land use pattern itself, by creating walkable communities, shopping centers, shopping opportunities so that not everyone has to get in their car or drive longer distances, is something that we've looked at as ways to reduce greenhouse gases. So our belief here was that, yes, there's going to be some output of greenhouse gases. It's not of such a scale, size of scale, that it would trigger in and of itself, you know, significant impact. And it overall sort of fits in with the goals of the draft general plan to encourage development within our communities to minimize trips and reduce trips.
Okay, I understand the balancing argument and the significance argument. I just wondered about, a truck idling in the parking lot would be creating a new source of greenhouse gas emissions, but if you say it, it balanced out. Okay. Would you believe?
There were a couple of issues that were raised I'd like to address, if it's okay. One of the discussions was about subdivision maps and parcel maps and the conditions that we impose. And frankly, we treat parcel maps and subdivision maps the same. They're just, it's a matter of scale. When we look at the impacts associated with a map, if it's a 200-lot subdivision map, we're not just talking about drawing lines on a piece of paper, you know, and then transferring that to the ground. We're looking at what's the future impact of those 200 homes. There's traffic generated by that. There's water and sewer demands. There's impacts of construction of those homes on biological resources or cultural resources. We treat this map, two parcel commercial map, the same way. We looked at, well, what's the likelihood of development of this? And the traffic analysis identified that we, you know, what's, you know, we have another three-acre parcel that would have a certain square footage of commercial development occurred. What would be the trip generation associated with that? So we looked at this as we would any other type of map. The difficulty that we have with this and the mitigation or the conditions that are desired to be imposed on this project are things that don't apply to the map. The conditions are things that you must satisfy these conditions before you can record your map. So we look at road improvements, waterline extensions. If there was a cultural resource, we'd say, okay, you need to put on the map a, an easement or restricted area that you can't build on to avoid that cultural resource or biological resource. When it comes to design criteria of the subsequent development, that's where we are struggling here. How do we impose a condition or mitigation measure on something that is unrelated to the map itself? It's a, if we had a planned development requirement here or design review standard, this would be easy, but it's not. And so we are looking at, you know, given what we have before us with the building permit submittal and any changes that might be made through an agreement, that would address some of the concerns. I don't believe, and my finding, and I'm not sure I agree with Mr. Infascino's, that we would, you know, we don't want to make changes, we're quite willing to make changes if necessary. And if we need to recirculate an environmental document, we're quite willing to do that. But I haven't found anything that rises to the level of significance yet based on our findings. Now, it's ultimately your decision as the planning commission. Do you agree with us? And if you find that, no, we do believe that this is a significant impact, then, you know, you would direct us to go back and recirculate this document. We're quite willing to work with the applicant and the community, if that's your desire, to try to come up with some resolution. I heard quite clearly from the applicant that they would like to move forward. They want an action taken today, and they do not want it referred back to us. But, you know, it's not something that we are against. I think that covers most of the concerns or the issues raised from our perspective, and happy to answer any further questions you might have.
I'm sorry?
I'll just have comments when we get around to discussing that. I have no more questions.
I don't necessarily have any more questions either. I'm, I'm ready to take comments from the commissioners. I had seen an article in the Caliber Center Prize, and it was interviewing Jessica Benson and her opposition to it. It also, in that same article, quoted Debbie Noble, an owner of Willseyville General Store, saying it would offer products but would not be the same quality as items her store sells, and it's great for the local people. We're not concerned. And then Sandy Maynard, who owns the Maynard Management, Inc. firm, that borders the opposite end of the proposed storefront, said she had no problem with the competition among businesses a Dollar General would create. I read through all the public comments because those were going to be very critical to me in this decision-making. And I tried to look locally to the people that would be the most impacted by this. There wasn't a lot of opposition in their community. Jessica, yes. So as far as within the community, Holly Mines had some good points that she brought up. I remember when it was coming to my town, and there was so much concern, and people were up in arms, talking to the Ace Hardware in our town, talking with the local grocery store in our town. They weren't concerned. They were actually happy because it was going to provide a product that they did not service. So those are some of the comments that I have. I, I guess where I struggle is that the people that own the property, it's always been C2 zoning. It's not changing from C2 zoning. They've always had the right to develop it. At what point does a property owner who's been paying their taxes for years and years and years, people that have moved into the area, know what they have bought next to, what they have lived next to, known the potential of what could be built there in the general plan? It's very specific of what types of stores can be built on a C2 zoning. So for me to take one person's right away that has owned this property for many, many years, it's an investment property that eventually would be developed, that plays an important role for me. I, I feel that they will stay within the county ordinance. They're going to stay within the codes for their building. I think that I'm going to be for allowing the lot split to go through. I'm not going to ask that it be sent back for further.
I feel that bringing a Dollar General store to West Point would be a major change to the small rural community. And we are dealing, what is before us now is a negative declaration saying there's, there's no substantial need for us to engage in many of the EIR procedures. And including, in considering this request for approval of a tentative parcel map, I believe the California Environmental Quality Act requires us to consider the environmental effects of the ultimate development and operation of the particular Dollar General store that will be constructed on one of the parcels. This has, my view, has nothing to do with whether it's going to be bad for business, other businesses, or fine for other businesses in West Point. We're dealing with a state act that involves the protection of the environment. We don't have all the necessary facts to make a final decision under CEQA here. However, at this point, I think there are several areas, including aesthetics, noise, mandatory findings of significance, possibly traffic and greenhouse gas emissions, where this project would have potentially significant impacts on the environment. Now, we've heard from a very authoritative attorney representing the developer, but she is here as an advocate. And I have often been an advocate in my life. And so I think I'll rely on my reading of their office's book on that score. These areas may be subject to mitigation, the areas such as aesthetics, noise, et cetera. And I think the applicant, the planning department, and other interested parties should have a chance to work together to see if a mitigated negative declaration would be appropriate. It's the duty of the commission to ensure that the California Environmental Quality Act is applied correctly so that the end of our proceedings, the developer is, if necessary, formally committed either to an EIR or to any necessary mitigation measures. It would be an abdication of our responsibilities for us to rely on future permitting procedures to do our work for us. An approval of an appropriate mitigated negative declaration that has been worked out through full give-and-take discussion would provide West Point with a Dollar General store that would give West Point citizens the services that they want, that many want there, without the adverse environmental effects, impacts that many fear. I find it impossible to vote and approve a negative declaration that this entire development would have no significant adverse effects on the environment. So I intend to, after voting on the resolution as stated, move that the matter be referred back to the planning department for reconsideration with a suggestion that the planning department, applicant, and interested parties engage in discussions, leading to a mitigated negative declaration, if such a declaration is found to be appropriate in this matter under CEQA. But at this point, I can't approve a negative declaration.
I agree with both Tim and Lisa. I'm standing more on the side with Tim. I think that there needs to be a little bit more done. And then I look at the property owner has a right to do this, so... I'm going to probably stand on, with Tim on this one, that there needs to be more community input. There needs to be more. There needs to be more. Okay, so when you're saying there needs to be more, obviously, our resolution... Okay, when you're saying there needs to be more, obviously, our resolution doesn't represent the more that you're asking for, so we're going to be, need to be very clear on what that resolution's going to need to say. I struggle with this because as a commercial two-property, I'm not sure where we're going with this because would there ever be an appropriate business to be built on these people's property? I just think that, and I understand you're not saying, "Oh, we don't want you to build. We're saying we want more." The county planning department hasn't come up with any legitimate reasons to go for more. So, but at this point, I'm going to need some clear, defined points of what you guys are asking the planning department to do, what the resolution is going to look like. Are we just going to vote to deny this? Well, I think what Tim is asking is for us to go back and revise the initial study to include, at a minimum, aesthetics, noise, greenhouse gas, and making mandatory findings of significance in relation to the entire project being Dollar General store in addition to the parcel map?
That is certainly one of the alternatives, and I think as a... And I, and I think as a part of that, need to get some more information from the developer.
For instance?
Just, just what are the, what are the hours the signs are going to be on? What are the operating hours going to be? I mean, things that are, have relevance to environmental impact, this, I mean, I think some generals, Dollar General Stores have their lights on all night even after they're closed. And to have that on in West Point would be a true aberration. I think there needs to be clarification from the developer. If there, if we need to submit a new initial study, yeah, I think then, then we have to do it. If there's, if there is a way of reaching an agreement, and, and the planning department, after considering these, these various additional areas, thinks there's a need for a mitigated, mitigated negative declaration to prepare a mitigated, negative declaration. I don't know if you can do that without resubmitting your initial study with the changes.
I suspect that you're correct. I don't think that I can.
I think what, what I would say is just I, I, I would move that the matter be referred back to the planning department for reconsideration, with the suggestion that the planning department, the applicant, and interested parties engage in discussions, leading, if appropriate, to a mitigated negative declaration.
Interested parties, meaning members of the general public?
Members of the public, yes.
Not sure how you, oh.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure how you're going to do that either.
I'll have to figure that out.
That's, but that's, I think, yeah, that's what I, that's what I would move. And I'm not intending to, to penalize a property owner. It's, it's just an application of a state law for the protection of the environment. And I'm, I, the way I see this going, eventually, there's going to be a Dollar General Store in West Point.
Let's, maybe we can resolve this quickly. If we need to do more, then maybe we need to take a lunch break. But I, I was thinking that there are sort of two possibilities here, given the indication of the commissioners of what direction they're leaning. One is that they refer it back to staff. Now typically, to have something continued, and this would be a continued hearing, you would want the concurrence with the, the applicant. If the applicant agrees that, you know, this makes more sense than having it denied, then, you know, I think we all agree to continue it, either off calendar or to a date certain, and then we would continue to work with the applicant and the community to try to resolve these issues. The other option, if the applicant says, no, I want an action today, then a motion to, I guess, approve the resolution would most likely fail, which would result in a denial of the parcel map. That could then be appealed to the board of supervisors.
Okay, so I think we should.
So it might be worth hearing from the applicant. If he's willing to continue, we can just vote to continue it, and we can, in the meeting, and.
Thank you. I appreciate everyone's work on this, and I realize it's a lot of deep thinking, and I, I agree or disagree, I appreciate it. Yeah, the will of the board is clear. We'd be happy to work with staff and, and other interested parties to come to more agreement, more review. Sure.
Appreciate that.
Just to clarify, there are multiple consultants involved. I, I would be uncomfortable going with a date certain at this point, as much as I'd like to. I don't think I can do that right now.
We really appreciate that, that position, and, and, you know, we appreciate it.
I enjoyed our discussion.
Okay, so we are going to be looking for a motion to refer back to staff.
To continue the item off calendar, refer it back to staff to work with the applicant and the community to resolve these issues as best we can.
To no date? No certain date?
No, yeah, because off calendar.
We'll renotice, we'll renotice.
We'll have to renotice everything, yeah. So the time we come to either a resolution or no resolution, then we would bring it back. And we, and we would decide at that point in time, you know, or somewhere during the process, whether there's a need to recirculate a revised environmental document, you know, those decisions would be made, and the hearing would be based upon whatever we conclude at that point.
I think that's great.
So what exactly are you going to try to?
Well, I think the issues that have been brought up are certainly by Commissioner Ladish, noise, aesthetics, greenhouse.
Greenhouse gas.
Greenhouse gas emissions.
So you're going to ask him, you're going to try and work out an agreement to do an EIR?
Well, we, no, no, not an EIR. We, we will look at those issues. If we need additional information from the applicant to see whether we react adequately, can address those, we may find that this new information is sufficient to satisfy the concerns of everyone. If there needs to be, and we'll work with counsel to determine the appropriateness of, you know, preparing a new environmental document, recirculating it, going back through the, that process, then that's something that, you know, we would need to consider through all this. So I don't know what steps will be at this point in time, but other than to at least start worth working with the, the applicant and identifying additional information that we might need that would provide this body with enough information to make a decision. And that's the whole purpose of CEQA, is to make an informed decision on the environmental impact associated with the project.
And I didn't want to tie your hands, just do this, then this.
Right, right. So we, we will look at the full range of, of issues, as, you know, we'll go back through the notes from the meeting, the issues raised by the public and the commission, and make sure those are addressed to your satisfaction.
And if you would reconsider the mandatory findings.
Well, we will look at it all, yeah.
Yeah. So we're going to take a five-minute break, so that Sarah can figure out which direction she needs to write this up in and go in. And then, do you just want five or 10?
Um, I think five.
Okay, so we will reconvene in five minutes. Sarah, this is her first time sitting with us, so it's kind of been fun. And she went and did some research, and I would prefer that you explain all that.
Oh, I was just explaining to the chair that because there are only three commissioners here today, any motion requires all three commissioners in order to carry.
But then we have actually no conclusion to the meeting. If, if two are, will not accept the resolution, yes, it's a hit.
Uh, that, correct. And so, I mean, one option, I think, for the commission, if there is no consensus on any other, if there's no three votes on any other option, is that you could, someone could make a motion to continue, continue this to a certain, a date certain, when you would have the full commission, and, and so essentially take no action on approval of the map today.
And, but that would not rule out doing what the planning director has described that they could do in trying to get, reach, reach a consensus.
It would not. You just would not be making that decision or, or giving that direction today.
So we could deny the resolution that was presented to us, and.
Well, if you denied the resolution, then that is an action.
That is an action.
And that's, and that's a appeal.
So I, I think that the, the, what I heard the majority of the commission stated was that it would make sense to continue it off calendar at this point in time, to work on some of these issues. If that is the motion, and it carries 3-0, then we're done for the day, and we will reschedule this when we're ready. If that does not carry unanimously, then no action's taken. The next course would be for someone to say, well, let's, let's approve or deny the map itself. That may or may not carry. So if no action is taken, it leaves everything sort of in limbo.
A little difficult for staff.
And it's a difficulty with a three-member commission. So the, so the final fallback position is, well, let's just continue it for two weeks until we have a full commission, and then at least we can take a vote on the continuance. And there may be three, three votes. It, it seems like sort of a, an unnecessary step, and hopefully, since everyone agreed that continuance is the best course of action, that we would have, you know, unanimous decision on that. But I can't guarantee that that's what your vote's going to be.
Do we need to, if we just move to continue, and if they're all three in favor of that, do we need to continue it to a date certain?
No, we can continue off calendar.
Okay. Are we ready for such a motion?
What's your motion?
Well, I'm going to see what I can come up with here.
Because.
The motion would be to continue this matter to a date uncertain, and with the hope that there will be discussions amongst the parties, so that by that, by the time it's resubmitted to the commission, there could be agreement between the, the project developer and the planning commission, planning department, and interested members of the vote. I don't know how to phrase that.
I, I think that the motion would be to continue, date is uncertain, or continue off calendar, to work with, direct staff, to work with the applicant and community to... And the concern that you have addressed is the, the adequacy of the environmental document.
Yeah.
To try to resolve issues brought up in the hearing, and to strengthen the environmental document.
Yes, but I, I would make such a motion. You phrased it much better than I would. And making it clear that the, the entire board is not bound by any.
We will bring this back as a new public hearing, a new noticed hearing, and whatever information that is brought forward will be discussed at that point in time. It will be up to the commission and attendants on that day to make a determination whether or not you agree with the recommendation of staff at that time.
All right. I appreciate your little, quick, little research. Are we set to make a motion?
I'm not. I, I personally would like to ask them if they would rather have a continuance of the hearing until all five commissioners are here, or if they want to move forward like they, I'm, I'm really struggling with this, because if they weren't doing a lot split, they wouldn't be here. They'd be building. So I, I'm struggling with this. It's, because of the lot split is the only reason that they're here. Otherwise, we'd have a building being erected, we would have jobs coming into the community with benefits, economic value, tax dollars coming into our county. And I really, really struggle with denying a business to come to Calaveras County, because every time we do this, we lose jobs. We are, it's an economic value to our county that we lose, and it's very difficult. I mean, that is a very difficult issue. What do we need? We need jobs in this county. We need tax dollars. We need revenue to support our county. And so I'm struggling with this, and I personally would like to hear if you would like to come back with the full commission, or if you want the continuance and you want to work through it.
I appreciate the opportunity to answer that. As, as much as we want to move ahead, I, I think that the, the questions have been clear. I'd be reluctant to come back and have the same discussion without some new review. So I think we need to work with staff.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay. On that note, make your motion, and we need a second.
I would like to make the motion in the way that it was phrased by the planning director.
Good thing we have this on tape.
I'll just bollocks it up, otherwise.
Okay, so we're making a motion to continue this hearing to an uncertain date, so that staff and the applicant can get together to work on some of the issues that have been brought up, and come back with maybe some mitigated factors before making a final decision.
And I'll be renoticed, reset for a new hearing at that time, whenever that may be.
And I fully, I'm, I'm opti, actually optimistic. I, I think with your goodwill and, and the people in the community and the planning staff's expertise, I think this, I think this can be put together. So thank you for trying to do it.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion will carry for continuance.
Okay. You guys wait until we're done here, we can talk about, say, a meeting or something, that'd be good.
Yeah, I agree. We have more steps to do. We still have, we have, still have a meeting. Okay, so we do not have any study sessions today, but we will go to public comment for anything that is not on the agenda today. Miss, did you want to leave? You look like you were ready to bolt.
Stop.
Okay. Nobody has any public comment? Okay, then we will go to, if anybody has any commissioner reports?
No.
Nope?
The only thing I would suggest, that in our packages, when we have like site plans, perhaps we could have a bigger copy. Even with a magnifying glass, I can't read dimensions.
Usually there is.
We, we'll, if we have full-size plans, we usually try to get, you know, make sure that each commissioner gets a copy of those. In some cases, we don't have them.
What we're getting is what you had, any of them.
But where we have full-size plans, we'll, we'll make sure that there's enough copies for the commission.
Thank you.
And if we don't have them, we think we need them, we'll do our best to get them for you.
It's nice to be able to read.
I, I agree.
I'm blind, I agree. Okay, any planning director reports?
I don't.
Okay. The next meeting for May 25th looks to be a very full agenda.
We will have a very full agenda for the next several meetings.
Okay. So there you go. Everybody bring lunch and dinner. All right, so that's it. We will adjourn the meeting, and thank you, everybody, for coming today.